Call our meeting to order and ask the clerk to please take our role.
Commissioner Baxter.
Here.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Marino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sax.
Here.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Woodward.
Here.
All right. With that, I'd like to ask Commissioner Bernard to please lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Everybody who's able to, please rise.
We ask you, God, to bless this meeting of people who earnestly desire to do their work in the best possible way to benefit those we serve and to leave to our children a better world. Please give us wisdom and vision to plan adequately and act correctly to achieve these ends. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Do we have proof of publication?
Yes.
All right. I would accept a motion to receive and file.
Submoved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marino, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor, all opposed. Passes unanimously. Next is going to be the swearing in of people who wish to speak. This is a quasi judicial hearing and requires speakers who come in front of this board to be sworn in. So, if you will, county attorney.
All those wishing to speak or testify on today's items, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Just want to be clear. If you did not raise your hand, you would not be eligible to speak to this body on this particular matter, on the matters in front of us in our zoning hearing. All right. All right. Next is, do we have any deletion, any deletions, any additions, deletions, and substitutions? Put them all together.
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have an amendments to the agenda. We have item 3B7, towns at Tidewater Flu, SEA 2022-019, request to postpone to February 23rd. The attachment is part of our amendments. No motion is necessary. Item 3B8, towns at Tidewater, the zoning application, ZCA 2021-02123. This is also a request to postpone to February 23rd, part of the attachment, and again, no motion is necessary. On the consent agenda, 3A2 Arigo, MUPD, we have modifications to an engineering condition number 11. I also need to read into the record a replacement condition for site design number one for exhibit C. This was, came after the ad delete was published. Three, or site design number one will be replaced with, prior to final approval by the development review officer, the applicant may modify the phasing of the repair and maintenance buildings, 30,000 square feet and 2,200 square feet, with consent from the property owner. We will also, on page two, regular agenda, 3B1, Century Village Residence Center, there's an amendment in exhibit C2, use limitations, under 3B4, assessment AGR PUD. We have some replacement and amendments to, a replacement of the attachment for the partial release, and there's an attachment to the amendments to the agenda. We have an amended motion for the official zoning map that it is subject to conditions of approval, and as well as the development order amendment is subject to conditions of approval. On 3B6, you'll see on your dais, we have a letter that was submitted on the 24th for Atlantic AGR Commercial for PDD CAW 2021-1361, a letter of support from the Delray Alliance. And then, I think as of this morning, we have two letters from Savannah Estates and Valencia Shores for 3B, 3A3 for Jack Rabbit property. Under public hearing comprehensive plan amendments, 4D, 4D4, there is an amendment to the location. And 4D5, SR7 Business Plaza, an amendment to the application number. And that is all of the amendments.
All right. With that, I will take a motion.
Motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by the vice mayor. All in favor, all opposed. That passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. So, just to also set expectations for what's going to be happening here this morning, or this, today, because we have a number of items to deal with. We will be taking a break at some point, hopefully around lunchtime, for about 30 minutes, so that we can all stretch our legs and get something to eat. And then, at the end of our zoning hearings, we, and before we go into our planning items, we'll also be taking another break, hopefully to facilitate people being able to get in and out of the room without talking and getting over other people that are trying to present to the board. So, with that, I think we've set, set the floor, and let us move on to, you have an, oh, before we get there, let's see, moving on to the consent agenda, and we do have two cards, but before we get there, we need to get disclosures from members of the board. So, we will start to my left, and that would be Commissioner Woodward. Disclosure, please, on consent.
I have disclosure for 3A3, Jack Rabbit property, verbal with Kentuma and email correspondence.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. On item 3A3, I've had verbal with Kentuma, Tyler Woosley, and Amy Carlson. And yes, I received correspondence.
Thank you. Commissioner Marino?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had, on the same item, I met with Urban Design Studio and Pulte Home Company, and I've received written communication from a resident.
And Commissioner Baxter?
On the same item, I had communication with Kentuma, and I spoke with Amy Carlson as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. On the consent agenda, item 3A3, Jack Rabbit property, I spoke with Kentuma, Amy Carlson, Tyler Woosley. A member of my staff spoke with Barbara Roth, and I did receive correspondence.
Thank you. And vice mayor?
Thank you very much, Mayor. On item 3A3, Jack Rabbit property, had verbal communications, was a phone call from a resident, and I receive and file, please, emails from Savannah Estates.
Thank you. And on item 3A1, Journey Church, I received email correspondence. On item 3A2, no disclosure. On item 3A3, I had verbal communication with Kentuma and Amy Carlson, and received email correspondence, a letter of support. And that, that is all I have. All right. So, we have two cards on the consent agenda. Anyone want to pull anything from consent?
Thank you. On item 3A1, Vicky McGinnis, please, and on item 3A3, Barbara Roth.
You'll have three minutes, Ms. McGinnis.
Thank you. My name is Vicky McGinnis, and I live on the street, Tall Pines Drive, where Journey Church is at the end of my street. And I have lived there for going on 30 years. My next door neighbors have been there longer than that, and the other neighbor has been there over 40 years, probably. There's three houses on the street of Tall Pines Drive, and we, all the neighbors, all of the homeowners and all the residents oppose this daycare project. We've just already have an awful lot of traffic down our street. The church is at the end. It's kind of like a dead end down there, and the church is at the end of the street. It's just no place for a daycare in a neighborhood, in a residential area, and they want to have it as large as 200 children. And this is a street, a short street, where it's going to be, you know, not only early in the mornings, but till later on in the evenings. And already, the church has all kinds of events. Sometimes it's weekend events. Sometimes they last seven hours on Fridays, nine hours on Saturdays, three services on Sundays. There's all the delivery trucks that we deal with already up and down the street, just due to the church. It's very close to the Lantana intersection. It's only two tenths of a mile from that busy intersection there. Now, there's a Wawa, so it's even going to be busier. In order to pull out of Tall Pines, and to go north, you got to pull out and turn a quick U-turn. In order to come into the church area, if you're coming from the south, you got to pull another U-turn to come in. And it's just, just a lot of traffic in that area. And there's, there's daycares all around already, two on each corner practically, and I counted about 20 on the internet. And my house is right next door to the church property. I'm only 10 yards from the street, so I get all the traffic, no matter what time they're coming in and out. And they have these big events, a lot of times. Most Wednesday nights, there's hundreds of cars coming in and out, and they have power events, and it's just too much going on in a neighborhood to add a daycare center. And, and also, the, most recently on social media, I've noticed that the church supports seven villages in Venezuela, so I'm sure that maybe this daycare is to support the villages. But, you know, it's sad that if these single moms come in with their children and thinking they're helping the church and, and the neighborhood and all, and their money's being sent to Venezuela, and then they're getting ready to, the church is going to have another power event in Venezuela, I guess. And I'm retired. I'm at home all the time. My neighbor's at home all the time. She's on a medical. We just don't want all these screaming kids and all the extra traffic. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I have letters that my neighbor has signed, and also a photo of the area.
Thank you. The clerk will take that from you, or somebody from staff will grab that.
Thank you. Barbara Roth, you put a card in for 3A3? You wish to speak?
Did you put the wrong number on there?
Jack Rabbit?
Thank you for your patience. Congratulations, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and new commissioners, District Six and District Four. Barbara Roth, speaking, representing Cobra. I just want to speak in support of the Jack Rabbit application. You have letters, I believe, that came in today on behalf of Valencia Shores and Savannah Estates. Both of those are communities who are members of Cobra. We worked side by side with them, and we would recommend that you approve of this project. It is in District Six, and we think that accommodations have been made for those two communities by Urban Design. So, I thank you for that consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Roth. All right. Nothing else? Commissioner Kerner, you recognize?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my only question relates to the church property, and then from a zoning context, is it possible that staff could inform us of any changes in, I guess, the traffic counts, or what their entitlement is to use that building for the purposes that it's been applied for?
This site is approved for a K through 12 school, so from a zoning perspective, replacing the school, which is going to have sat drop-off pickup times, from zoning perspective, we were totally fine with the replacement, the abandonment of the school approval, and replacing it with a daycare. We do have a traffic analysis in the staff report. I don't know if a traffic representative would want to speak specifically to the numbers.
The project traffic meets the traffic performance standard.
Excuse me. First, can you identify yourself, please?
Hanan Akif, with the Traffic Division of Palm Beach County.
And can you, now, can you, go ahead.
The project traffic meets the traffic performance standards.
So, Mayor, I guess the ultimate question is that this is, they're entitled to have this daycare center there by prior decisions of this board?
The daycare is one of the requested, the Class A conditional uses is for this request, so it's not allowed by, permitted by right. The board has to make a determination that it's okay to have the daycare.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all the questions I have.
All right. Anything else from the board? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bernard. We have a second by Commissioner Marino. All in favor, all opposed. That motion carries 7-0. All right. Moving on. So, we're moving on now to three, our regular agenda, 3B1. This is Century Village Resident Service Center, application number ZV/DOA 2021-02186. And I believe we will be getting a, let's see, we can do disclosures on this item? So, we'll start, this time we'll start to my right, and that would be Commissioner Baxter. Do you have any items to disclose on this matter? Right. Thank you. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. On agenda, item 3B1, Century Village Service Center, I had verbal communication with Seth Bane Esquire, and correspondence received in my office.
Thank you. Vice mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. On item number 3B1, Century Village Resident Service Center, I have verbal communication with a phone conversation with Seth Bane, and receive and file correspondence and emails.
Thank you. And moving on, Commissioner Woodward?
No disclosure.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. On item 3B1, I've received, met with Mr. Seth Ben, and also received numerous emails regarding this item.
Thank you. Commissioner Marino?
Thank you. On this item, I met with Seth Ben, and I've received emails from residents.
Thank you very much. All right. And on this item, 3B1, I had verbal communication with David Israel, Susan Canzel, Seth Bane, Ruth Berman, and Michael Doche. My staff has spoken to numerous residents and participated in a Zoom call with residents, applicant, and county staff, received letters and emails as correspondence. All right. Okay. So, moving on, let us turn this over for a presentation. I believe the applicant will be making the presentation. Mr. Bane?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Seth Bane. I'm here as the attorney for the Caucus of LLC. Its members, Jacob Frankel and Simon Friedman. I'm joined today by our staff planner from WGI, Matthew Barnes. Today's project, we're going to be discussing a simple concept, which is, does the Board of County Commissioners have a role to play in defending its citizens' First Amendment, First Amendment rights, specifically to practice their freedom of religion? And the answer is certainly yes. And it's in part, we know, because of the federal law, known as the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons' Protection Act, that I'm going to discuss briefly at the end. But what I'm going to show you first is this proposal we have before you. You'll see that it's a modest proposal, but it obviously, it's a proposal that, by showing of the people in the audience today, is extraordinarily important to them and their lives, and how they choose to worship their god. So, with that said, let's be, take a look at what it is we're here to talk about today. So, this project is located within Century Village. Century Village is just north of Okeechobee Boulevard, just east of the Turnpike. Century Village has over 6,500 residential units. If it was a city, it would be one of the, it would be larger than half the cities in, in Palm Beach County. Very active community, strictly residential, except for recreational uses and our use, which we'll talk about. That little star that just came in shows the site that we're here to talk about today. Zooming in slightly to it, we see the property that's in question today. It's 2.38 acres. It's improved with a building on the north side, and on the south side of Century Boulevard is a overflow parking. That's part of the property that it's owned. To the west there, you see the property is bordered by a large lake, and then that large island there is the recreational center for Century Village, which has parking lot, swimming pool, recreation center, theater, et cetera. Zooming in slightly closer, you can see how our building is located and how it is compared to that recreation facility to the west. So, here is that building. So, how this project came to me was, a little over a year ago, Simon and Jacob came, gave me a call, and said, "Seth, we are interested in buying the commercial building that's in Century Village." And my response was, "There's a commercial building in Century Village?" Yeah, there is. Well, part of the reason I had no idea was because the only people that are allowed to shop here are the people that live in Century Village. So, no one can come out from outside the community into the community. But I said, "Great. It looks for sale. It needed a little upkeep, but they're, be happy to buy it." They said, "But here's the question we have for you, Seth. We have a Orthodox community here in Century Village that has to walk when they attend service on their holy days. Currently, the closest location is to the east across Haverhill Boulevard. Haverhill's five lanes, undivided, high speed in this area, and on top of that, it's outside the community. So, as a retirement community, and many elderly members, this was simply a barrier too great for them to attend." So, they asked me, "Seth, in the back of this building, on the first floor, is 3,000 square feet that's vacant. Could we place a small synagogue on that first floor in the back that our residents could walk to?" And I said, "Well, I don't know. Let me take a look at the zoning code and see what it says." So, what it says is that in this zoning district, synagogue, place of worship, institutional uses, permitted with only staff review. This is great news. What we refer to as a DRO review, Development Review Officer. So, typically, when you want to put a use like that in here, where already is a commercial building, it's, it's a piece of cake. You walk in the zoning, you say, "I'm replacing this conditional use with a permitted use, staff review only, no problem." So, I told Jacob and Simon, "This is great news. Let me talk to staff." So, staff takes a look at it, and they say, "Seth, we need to talk about the history of this building a little bit." So, this building was originally built in 1968, when Century Village was initially developed, and it was called the Administration Building. It provided offices for the community as it was being developed. I assume maybe real estate administration, et cetera. In the 1990s, the use of the building had kind of run its course, and the owners said, "Hey, we think the community would really benefit from a commercial, some commercial services. There's none in the community at this point. So, to go to a doctor, to go to a pharmacy, to get your hair done, you've got to go outside of the community. We think there'd be a real benefit to having it right here centrally located." So, they came here to the county. It was zoned residential, so they had to make that request. There was a big back and forth, like all of these things that had some controversy around it, and ultimately, it was approved. But it was approved with a condition of approval that said, "You can't do any commercial in here. We want to have some limitations, A, to make sure it meets the community's standards, and B, doesn't create negative impacts." So, what did that, so we're going to have a condition of approval that the Board of County Commissioners passed. It says, "It can be a certain amount of retail. It can be doctors' offices. It can be a pharmacy, personal services like a salon. We're capping it at what you can do." So, when I'm talking to staff, they say, "Seth, we've got a little problem here, because that condition of approval, when it was approved, says, 'The only uses allowed in this building are commercial this, commercial that.' Even though you're asking for a permitted use, we need you to come to the Board of County Commissioners and have that condition modified, because right now, it just reads to us as a bar of any use. So, we need you to come in, even though it's permitted, and change the wording of this, so it's clear that you're allowed just these commercial uses, but also, you're not restricted from introducing this institutional use that would normally be allowed." So, I said, "Great. We can do that." So, where would that be? So, here's the building. What you're looking at here is the south facade. That's the commercial facade. That's where most people go. If you're going to the pharmacy, if you're going to the salon, you're parking right there, you're entering this portion of the building. The area we're talking about is the backside, which is the north, first floor. In that yellow box is the area where we're indicating. This building is 31,800 square feet. This use we're asking for is 3,600 square feet. It's 11% of the building. It's not reconfiguring the entire building. Our clients wouldn't want that. They're collecting rent from the pharmacy and the doctors' offices. We're not eliminating the commercial use in any way. We're introducing this into 11% of the building. Here's the actual outline of what that footprint would look like, and, and again, this kind of shows where that, where, what that configuration is and where that's at. So, that little blue box there on the rear back, on the first, first floor only, is the area that we're considering this use for. So, we had that discussion. Here's what staff says we have to do. So, then they came to me and said, "Seth, we have one other question. We have a community that in our tradition, men and women bathe separately, and that extends to swimming pools." So, what that currently means is that in Century Village, if members of our community want to take advantage of the Florida sunshine and do what we all want to do, go sit by the pool, they have to do so at a time when there's, if it's a group of women, there's no men at the pool. And if men show up at the pool, they have to leave, creating an awkward situation for them, certainly the men at the pool. Women from the Orthodox community reached out to the management company and said, "Hey, there are 17 pools in Century Village. Is there one we could set aside for a couple hours a day for women only? Is there one in the community we could set aside for a couple hours for men only?" The answer was a resounding no. These are community pools. Everybody pays for them. Nobody gets special treatment. Okay, so we're shut out. So, they said to me, "Seth, as an accessory to our synagogue, can we allow swimming pools on the property?" So, I said, "Okay." Again, we have to look at two different things here. One, what's the zoning say about that? Well, what the zoning says is, accessory uses to places of worship are institutional, entirely unremarkable. We just heard about a school. That was an upgrade, but I'm talking about fellowship halls, playgrounds, basketball courts, soccer fields, et cetera. Nothing unremarkable, nothing remarkable about asking for an accessory use to a religious community. No problem. Next question is, from a practical standpoint, can it happen? Well, we've got to look at the configuration of the property. The building's been there for 50 years. It is what it is. And this, what we see here, is what we came up with. Two swimming pools, relatively limited in size, 100% screened, separated from each other by a privacy barrier, and located on the property, again, in the rear, adjacent to the synagogue location. When we brought this in initially, we had two variances we asked for. One, again, because of the tightness of the property, based on just where the building is located, we wanted the north pool. We asked for a variance to the north, to reduce the 30-foot setback to the north. That's a residential community to the north. It's the only residential community we abut, and staff said, "We will not support that variance." Even if you have Even if you have to make the pool smaller, even if you have to locate it down, we're requiring you to move that pool and meet the 30-foot setback to the north. And we said, fine, we'll do that. We'll make that adjustment to meet that standard. The only other variance we needed was from the rear from the lake. We're working in a limited space back there. So we had requested to be allowed an eight-foot setback from that property line. If you recall, what's adjacent to that is hundreds of feet of lake, and then the rec center, a parking lot, and no view corridor, no direct impact on somebody, and again, attractively and completely screened. That variance sailed through the zoning commission, no problem, and has been approved. Now, with that said, zoning approved this, zoning commission approved those variances. This site plan recommended unanimously for approval. But there were comments from the community. A number of residents got up, and one of the things they said was, hey, is there any way you can reduce the intensity of this? Specifically, why can't you put in one pool? You said you were willing to deal with change of hours from time to time in one of the other pools. We would like you to put in one pool because, you know, most of our communities have one pool. Again, we had supported the zoning commission, but following the zoning commission, we sat down with our designers, with our planners, to see if we could meet that requirement and come up with a better solution. And we think we have. This, hard to see, but this is the one pool plan that we are willing to commit to. What this means is that there'll be only men or only women there at any given time, reducing the intensity. This pool meets that 30-foot setback to the north, so it meets the zoning standard. And because of the little denser, little single configuration, we've moved it five feet further away from the lake, so where it wasn't eight-foot variance is now 13-foot setback. So we can put chairs on that side. So we've even reduced the intensity of that variance. The pool itself is smaller than the other two pools combined. So again, a further reduction in the intensity and, and meets your code requirements. Parking hasn't changed one iota. Landscaping's been improved. There's greater green space to the south of it behind the building. Staff has not fully reviewed this, but this is a DR. What we're approving today is to give it to staff as a DRO approval. So they've seen this plan, they've looked at it, we've explained what I just explained to you. And, you know, if there, there may be some tweaking, a final review, the staff will have a chance to, to make that final review. This is what those pools will look like, this single pool will look like, completely privacy screened. This is what the interior of that pool deck would appear to be from the parking lot. This is what you would see. Again, fully screened, landscaped, meeting code requirements and generating, you know, literally no impact on the larger community. And I show some of these just to say that in Century Village, there are 17 pools, this configuration adjacent to a clubhouse, adjacent to a building, adjacent to residences, entirely unremarkable, happens all the time, and, and is consistent with the nature of the community itself. So again, this is that location. And now, because this is quasi-judicial, and I always like to have my staff planner, my, my planning expert speak, I'm going to ask Matt to come up and run through the zoning standards briefly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matthew Barnes, Senior Project Manager at WGI. Seth has done a great job of explaining exactly what we're proposing here. So just to let you know exactly what it is we're requesting, it's, it's technically a development order amendment to a previously approved Class A conditional use to modify the use limitations that are conditions of approval to allow institutional and public facility uses. And we're, we're not adding on to the building. We're just converting existing square footage within the building that's currently vacant into a place of worship. The Type II variance was already, as Seth mentioned, was already approved by the zoning commission earlier this month. So this is kind of boring, but technical. This is the ULDC criteria for, that you're supposed to meet in, in order to approve a development order amendment. So item A that you see at the top of the screen, consistency with the plan, with the comprehensive plan. We put forth that the proposed amendment is minor in nature and will not jeopardize the subject site's existing determination to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Item B is consistency with the code, with the ULDC. The proposed use is consistent with the code. As Seth explained, it's, it's a permitted use by right. And while some, there's some physical limitations, we got the variance approved by the zoning commission, the, the site works well physically. Item C, compatibility with surrounding uses. The subject site is part of Century Village and serves as its accessory commercial parcel. It has been found to be compatible with the surrounding uses. The proposed amendment will not jeopardize any of the existing conditions, which presently provides screening and buffering of the commercial site to the adjacent residential uses. Item D, the design minimizes adverse impacts. The proposed structure is located internal to the pod, therefore it will not have any adverse impacts on adjacent lands. As Seth explained and you saw on the slides, the, the pool, you know, which is, and again, accessory use to the place of worship is, you know, to the west, there's a, there's a large lake that, between the recreation pod of Century Village and this proposed accessory use. At the top of this page, item E, the design minimizes environmental impacts. There are no environmental issues associated with this application beyond complying with the minimum criteria of the ULDC. Item F, development patterns. The subject site is currently developed. The proposed amendment will not jeopardize the development patterns of the subject site and the surrounding area, as it is simply modifying the uses within the resident service center. Item G, adequate public facilities. The subject site is currently developed and maintains adequate public facilities. Converting roughly 3,600 square feet of vacant commercial use to place of worship does not jeopardize the subject site's compliance with concurrency. Item H, changed conditions or circumstances. The proposed location within the resident service center is ideal due to proximity of it to its members that reside in the Century Village. As Seth explained, you know, there's, there's a, there's a need for this use in, in Century So, you know, the, the staff is recommending approval. You can, you can read through the staff report. Your professional staff is recommending approval. The zoning commission approved, the unanimous approval for the Type II variance. And they unanimously recommended to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the development
So I just want to touch on a couple of other items, and then I'll conclude. One of the items that's consistently been brought up by the community is the parking on the property and the impact that this will have. As a first point, as I pointed out during the services, the members of this community will walk there, so there's never a conflict when they're actually in service. Two, we meet the zoning requirements. So typically, when we're having a parking discussion, once staff has made the determination that the parking has met the zoning standards, that concludes the discussion. However, it's been brought up persistently, so we went one more step. And what we did was during last season, we had our traffic engineer put somebody on the property and do traffic counts every half hour for an entire day during the weekday and an entire day during the weekend. This was in March, so it was during high season. So the line at the top here represents how many parking spaces we have on the site in our new plan, 112 spaces. At the highest peak during the weekday, there were 61 cars on the property. There were 50 empty parking spaces at the peak of a Tuesday. During the weekend, there was never more than, there was never 25 cars on the site. So parking both from a technical standpoint and from the practical standpoint, which we expected just because we owned the property, our, my clients have owned this property for over a year, has never been an issue and remains that it, it won't be an issue. One other thing I want to bring up is that, and only because this came up at the zoning commission, is that someone stood up and said, I've gathered 700 signatures in opposition to this project. I said, wow, that sounds like a lot. So I asked for a copy of that petition. This is what it looked like. Item one on that petition says, first and foremost, this is a senior community. Residences have concerns that this would increase the number of children living in the community. Now, if I lived at Century Village, I would have signed that, but it has nothing to do with my project. The point that I don't know that I've even raised yet is that just as the commercial building is limited to residents of Century Village, so too is this synagogue. Only residents of Century Village may attend. There is no outside impacts. There's no increase. This is serving the people that live there and need an opportunity to worship. One of only many. Now, with that said, this isn't a beauty contest. Despite that fact, my client felt compelled to get several hundred letters of support signed, most of them by couples, that I will submit to the record. But that's not what we're here to talk about. This isn't a referendum. This is a discussion of what your zoning standards are and what the requirements of the law are. Which brings me back to this in conclusion. The Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, it's a federal law, and it's intended to prevent governments from using zoning as a means to contravene First Amendment rights. So how does it do that? It requires the highest standard when you're reviewing these things, which means that if you're going to restrict this use, it can't just be because you think it's a bad idea. You have to have a compelling interest to deny this. And two, your restrictions, even if you've got that compelling reason, has to be the least restrictive way possible. We have a four-year project that meets the zoning standards, that's a decrease in intensity, that has a swimming pool that's no different than every other swimming pool in this community. And thus, the standards have been met, and there's no basis upon which we would find to deny this. The courts typically agree. Two quick cases. One points out the fact that a government made an improper denial of a site plan and variances for sanctuary, offices, library, kitchen, gymnasium, and classroom. Plans were approved with no further action necessary. I pointed this out to show that it's not just the sanctuary, it's the entire community, it's the entire facility that's protected by our lupa. And finally, this quote I thought was especially useful. "The framers and Congress and their collective wisdom were cognizant of the power and tendency of a majority to marginalize and discriminate against an unfamiliar or unpopular minority." We would ask that you not do that. You would see this project for what it is and the importance it is to our community. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and I would ask that at the conclusion of public comment, if there's anything that you would like me to address, I'd be happy to. Thank you.
So people were cars and you speak, no, not in here.
Somebody see where that, what's turned on?
It's not my phone.
Thank you. All right. Questions for Mr. Bain. And Commissioner Kerner, you're first up.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Bain, for the presentation. I have two questions regarding the development order application item or part D. It says, design minimizes adverse impacts. I'm not clear what adverse impacts there would be, considering the extent of, of the, there's a facade, it looks like, around the pool area. So I don't know how changing it from two pools to one pool further minimizes adverse impacts.
Well, it allowed us to increase the setback from the lake, so that we've reduced that. And it has increased the amount of landscaping that we surrounded it by. So we have some additional green space to the south behind the, behind the building and some additional landscaping to the, the north that we can import because with one pool, we've shrunk that. So we've, it's allowed us to increase the buffering slightly more, so that would be how we've done that.
But who's the beneficiary of the increased landscaping, considering that I think it abuts open space?
There's one residence to the north, so, I mean, that residential area to the north was always fully screened, so I don't know that it's much of an increase or an improvement. But it's, it's marginal. The intensity of during the week, you know, you would have fewer people attending at any single time. Again, the, 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 the volume of that use or the nature of it really wouldn't be all that impactful, but, you know, in our opinion. But we were trying to be responsive to the community's desires.
Okay. And the board appreciates efforts by applicants to do that, but I have concerns regarding how does the intensity change with one versus two pools? And under the RLU IPA, we are bound to use the most least restrictive restrictions. And I feel that we may not be doing that and that we're being overly restrictive by not allowing two pools. Can you comment on that?
Absolutely. We came out of the zoning commission believing that, you know, we had the support of the commission and that two pools had very little impact. So I agree that if we had continued on that path, that I would be making that very statement, that, that these two pools have zero negative impacts. So it is a voluntary action on our part to attempt to address the, the concerns of the community. Completely voluntary, not asking you to make that decision or not. It's always been an accessory use anyway. And I don't think the code has any way to even distinguish between one and two pools if you met all the other requirements, quite frankly, other than the fact that, again, because of the nature of our community, it'll only be women there at one time, it'll only be men there at one time. And that's a concession that we were willing to make, again, in an effort to reach out to the community that has, has, has raised issues.
But if it's a concession and it's not the most accommodating concession to the religious views of, of the community that's essentially applying for this, then, then why make that concession?
Again, it was, somebody came up specifically up to the podium at the zoning commission and said, there's no reason you can't do this with one pool. And our, our, you know, my clients were willing to sit down and see if there was a one pool solution. And recall, we had to move that north pool anyway to meet that north setback. So we were going to have to shrink that other pool. So part of it in their mind, I think, was if we create one pool, it'll, it might actually be a nicer kind of facility, even though we've got to split the time for it. So I think in the end, they were happy with what their designers showed them and the solution that we came up with.
All right. Well, obviously, I'm going to listen to public comment and hear what the community has to say, but I'll have probably some more questions about that issue at the conclusion of the public testimony.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to going from the two pool to one pool, kind of like, like, what's, what was the process in terms of shifting from two to one?
For us, it was, you know, a zoning question. What are the setback requirements? And making sure that the area of the pool, single pool, was less than the area of the two pools, so we're showing that it was a decrease in intensity. So we made sure we met that 30-foot north setback, which we already had to do. Made sure that the setback from the lake was at least the same, and in fact, grew at larger, made that, because we have that variance was awarded. So as long as we don't, you know, make that variance less, as long as we're able to, you know, meet that setback or make it greater, we had the envelope that we could work in. And then again, it was making a pool that, you know, was a facility that would be valuable to the community.
You know, I, to me, I just think that it's very hard for us to, you know, when you brought up the compelling interest in the least restrictive way possible, I just believe that, you know, adopting the two pools is, you know, the best way to go versus the one single pool. So, but that's my thinking, because I, I think that that would meet that requirement today.
Well, this approval ultimately, the, the approval is to allow the development order amendment to allow the use. The pools are accessory. So if your direction to your staff was, hey, they have the two-pole configuration, but since this is going to be just DRO review, if, if the one pool works, if the two pools work, if you want to give them the option to approve it, staff's fully reviewed the two-plan pool, the two-pole plan, site plan. So staff's had a full review of that. So to the extent that you want to say, that's fine, we have no issue with the two pools, and in fact, it maybe does a better job of meeting what your community needs, and it might, fantastic. If you want to give staff the option, say, well, let, let them sit down and look at it once staff reviews the single pool, if they have issues and think that the two-pole plan that they had signed off on really is the better plan, then, then we would certainly be okay with that.
But can we, if we decide to, I don't know if I want to send that to staff to make that decision. I think that I would prefer for the board to make that decision. And, and then if the two pools doesn't work, then, then you can go back to that one pool. But that's my thinking.
Yeah.
Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Hi. So quickly, do you believe your clients still prefer two pools or not?
It's hard to say, only because they invested, you know, a lot of energy into getting this one-pole plan done and creating it beautiful and coming up with the space. I think they're certainly amenable to it. Like I said, that- Like I said, that plan needed to be adjusted slightly anyway to meet the 30-foot setback, and I could certainly ask them and come back to you after public comment. I think they're happy with it either way. It's important for them to have the use, so they're open to the option. Again, the one-pool plan was to try to see, come up with something that was, you know, a bit of a compromise, and it was consistent with the nature of the community, where there's one pool everywhere.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
This pool thing is really a big deal.
Apparently.
I mean, the only thing for me on two pools or one pool is that where the women have the same time in the one pool as the men have in the one pool. That's, you know, other than that, my, my issues are this, and you and I have discussed this before. I know, many years ago, when the Levy family built the two Century Villages, and I represent Century Village Boca Raton. Scott, you and I spoke about this, and what I wanted to know is, Century Village Boca Raton has two synagogues. Two. How did they do it, and what amenities did they have to support two very active synagogues in Century Village Boca Raton? If you know.
Well, what I know is that the configuration of Century Village and Boca Raton's slightly different than this. Those synagogues that were approved are not with, behind a gated wall, as it is here, from my understanding. They are on a major thoroughfare. So even the zoning standards that they're allowed are different, the scale of it is different. They do not have the same sort of restriction of who can attend there. So the nature of this use being the smaller scale of it, internal to the community, and limited to just the residents here, make this unique to that situation. Those were approved in a more standard zoning configuration, doesn't have quite the same history that this internal project does. Other than that, I can't speak to the particulars of those approvals. You know, again, slightly different situation because they're external to the actual walled community, or the...
Actually, to get into the synagogue at Century Village Boca Raton, you have to go through a gate. To go through a gate, you have to show you're either a resident or you're invited guest. So it's not exterior to the walls of Century Village. My, my concern is this. I would imagine that, can you identify most of the people who are against this, this wonderful project that y'all have been working on?
I have no idea. You know, we, like I said, we had a Zoom meeting with the residents, and, you know, some of them, you know, brought up some of their concerns, but, you know, I've yet to hear anything that spoke specifically to the zoning requirements, or the standards, or the intensity, or the impact to the community, which, again, you know, in our opinion, is virtually nothing.
Would they be folks who would like to also have a synagogue, or other religious institution there within Century Village?
I couldn't speak to them. I'm sure they're, they're here to speak on that fact today. They're happy to do so. You know, our challenge comes from the fact that we are required to walk to service. So because of that, it needs to be centrally located, so the demand, the need that we have is unusual compared to other communities. Now, with that said, anyone who practices the Jewish faith is welcome to attend, you know, service at, at the synagogue.
So other Jews of other, say, conservative or reform would be welcome within the Orthodox synagogue and Orthodox community?
I was told they're welcome to...
A lot of folks shaking their heads, yes, so that would probably be a yes.
I was told that.
People who are Orthodox and are in the, in the community, or outside of Century Village, but within the community of, of Orthodox Jews, would they be able to come in as a guest and also worship in their synagogue?
I don't know the rules surrounding Century Village and guests. I think if they were a personal guest of one of the members there, I believe so, if they were accompanied by one. I'm not sure how that currently works. I don't know if someone from the outside can go to the pharmacy, if their friend invites them in to visit and they can go to the pharmacy. I don't know how that's been handled in the past, but I would certainly think so, if you are attending with someone that you know.
They would be welcome.
You would have had to walk in there to get there.
But they would be welcome to, to worship.
I would certainly think so.
And one other thing, who pays for the maintenance of the one pool, two pools, two-and-a-half pools? Who, who, would this be an assessment that would be levied only upon the, you know, the congregants, or the, those who are in the synagogue?
This is...
Or would those assess...
Just one second.
Because this is important. Because then you have people who are not using that amenity, unless, let me, let me preface this with this. Would folks from inside Century Village who are not members of the congregation, would they be welcome to use the, the pool or any amenity within the synagogue?
The answer is, this is a private facility, as is any church, any, any church accessory uses. Answering that first question, the answer is no. No one in the community will pay any assessment and take over any maintenance cost. This is owned, the building is owned by my clients, the property is owned by my clients, the pools themselves will be owned by the Calcasidum, which is a private company that has members, it's an LLC. There will be no costs to the outside community. It's a private facility, the synagogue is a private building, just as every commercial use in there is owned by, you know, private citizens and controlled as such. It's not, it's not, it's not public and it's not communal.
But the private uses... Let me interrupt you.
Yeah, yeah.
The private commercial uses within that building are open to any resident of Century Village. However, this entity will be completely private, maintained financially by the folks, by the congregants, who are members of this community.
Correct.
And that is it. And that's, 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 that's a good answer. That's the answer. Okay. All right. Thank you very much at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right. I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Bain. What's the capacity of the synagogue?
We have a seat count. Jacob, do you have the seat count on you? Flip to my site plan. 148 seats.
And that would be for both men and women?
That's combined. Correct.
Okay. And how about for the swimming pool? What's the capacity?
The pool is 1,500 square feet. It's got 71 seats is our current, oh, actually, that's the two-pool plan. Let me take that back. Let me see how many outdoor lounge chairs are on the, I think this is the...
Isn't there a capacity limit for the interior of the pool, too? Doesn't, doesn't the fire marshal set something, or is there a code requirement on that?
It's a department that looks at that.
Okay. So do we know, we know what their finding was?
No.
Mr. Bain, do you have that?
Yeah, I, I do not. Pool's 1,800 square feet. We have approximately, it looks like 50 chairs on the deck. Obviously, whatever the building code requirements are, we would obey by and post that.
Okay. All right. Anything else for missed, for the applicant? I'm seeing nothing. Okay. Moving on. So we will now hear from staff, and then, we'll then hear from our county attorney.
Good morning. Wendy Hernandez, for the record, and I'm going to do a brief summary of the request. Again, it's located the northwest corner of the intersection of East and Century. It's inside Century Village. The site has a high residential 18, future land use, and a residential high zoning classification. The site in itself is 2.38 acres. They had a request for four variances originally, three were withdrawn, and one was approved by the zoning commission to reduce the site setback. The site setback being that along the western property line abutting the water body. The request before the board is the Development Order Amendment, where they're modifying the site plan, and more specifically, their request is to modify prior conditions of approval in order to modify the use. The site in itself was approved in 1993. Century Village was approved in the late 60s, prior to planned unit development approvals. Planned unit development approvals, when you come into the code now, allows for residential pods, rec pods, and commercial pods. So when they developed this code back in the 90s, this was called a, an accessory commercial use, originally back in 1993. And this was to allow, very similar to PUDs, a commercial pod within this residential development, to allow, support commercial uses within a development that was approved prior to planned unit developments. So this was approved in 1993, and as part of that approval, they put conditions of approval on it, limiting the uses. And those conditions are on, in the staff report on pages 10, and it rolls over to page 11. And so more specifically, what the applicant is requesting is to modify that list of uses in order to allow for institutional uses. And you'll see as part of the existing conditions, they currently have the allowance for retail, medical office, medical and dental office, offices of business professional use, personal services, adult daycare limited, and a financial institution. And I'll call attention to adult daycare. Adult daycare is one of our civic institutional uses. So civic institutional uses are already allowed currently, and was previously approved by the board back in 1993. So the applicant's request ultimately is to modify this list of uses to call out institutional uses, public and civic, which was thus allow the place of worship, which is an administrative approval through staff. And several years ago, we modified the code. Places of worship were a board approval because of changes to federal law. The code was modified to make churches an administrative approval through staff. So this is the detailed site plan that we have with two pools on it. The site is 31,000 square feet. 112 parking spaces are proposed. They are not proposing any additions to the existing structure. They are going to utilize the existing space. And then I will turn it over to Scott, and he can go over some legal issues with our Lupa.
So before I get into that, for the benefit of the new commissioners and the public, I just wanted to kind of briefly go over quasi-judicial hearing process. So this particular item is a zoning application, subject to what we call quasi-judicial rules of procedure. It's not quite an evidentiary trial at court, but there are certain due process and procedural requirements that are a part of these types of requests. So kind of taking a step back, the, there's been a mention of this variance, and the variance was already approved by the zoning commission, so that's not what's before you today. What's before you today is the Development Order Amendment, and you will be the final decision-maker on that. And so, under quasi-judicial procedures, as I mentioned, there's certain due process required. For example, ex parte disclosures that are done at the beginning of the hearing, the applicant is afforded a certain amount of time to speak, public are given a certain amount of time to speak. And then each application, in this particular instance, a development order, has certain standards of approval which have to be met. And I believe there's eight standards of approval, so all of those have to be satisfied. And it's a very high evidentiary standard. It has to be what we call competent substantial evidence. So it can't just be any evidence, it has to be certain evidence that meets that competent substantial threshold. And ultimately, the decision is yours, but again, there are certain procedural and, and process requirements as part of this. And so, the applicant's given their presentation, staff has given their presentation, and the public are given a chance to speak. And then after the public are given the chance to speak, the applicant can cross-examine, the staff can cross-examine, and other, other types of conduct that's spelled out within our quasi-judicial rules of conduct. So with that being said, I did want to give a little legal background specifically on this request. And I, I wanted to start with, the applicant referenced First Amendment rights and strict scrutiny standard, and I just wanted to point out that not every land use decision is subject to strict scrutiny. There's a law called our Lupa, which clearly spells out which types of decisions are subject to that. So anytime we deal with land use regulations and places of worship, this law may apply. And the law is not a blanket exemption from zoning regulation, but it does prohibit a government from imposing unduly burdensome or discriminatory standards on, on a place of worship. As you can see, there's four, the four provisions up there, the first two of which we'll focus on, because those are the most likely to be implicated. And I'll, I'll briefly go over these. The first is called the substantial burdens test, and that says that the county cannot impose a regulation that imposes a substantial burden on the applicant's religious exercise, which is a defined term, unless the county demonstrates that the decision is in furtherance of a compelling governmental interest, and is the least restrictive means of achieving that governmental interest. And that second part, the after unless, is known as the strict scrutiny standard, which the applicant also went through. So here, if the county were to, for example, deny the request, and thus prohibit the place of worship, and then it was challenged in court under this law, a court would first, as a threshold question, look to determine whether there was a substantial burden. If they determined that there was a substantial burden, then they would apply the strict scrutiny standard to the decision. The court's determination of whether there is a substantial burden is a very facts and case-specific analysis. The second provision is known as the equal terms test, and that says that the county cannot impose a regulation that treats a place of worship on less than equal terms as a nonreligious place of assembly. On this property right now, there is currently a permitted use called adult daycare. And it's possible, based on case law, that that use may be considered a nonreligious assembly for purposes of the law. If the equal terms provision is violated, then it would also be subject to that strict scrutiny standard. So again, just wanted to give you a little bit of legal background on that.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. All right. Okay. Let's see. I guess we're moving on to public comment, or is staff, are you finished with your presentation? Okay. So moving on to public comment, I will be turning this over to my commissioner on my right, and Commissioner... Oh, on my left.
First, I'd like to just say thank you to the almost 200 people that have put in a comment card. We will have 13 speakers. We have 23 comment cards that are in opposition so far, and we have 145 comment cards that are in support of the project. So I am going to call two names at a time. You can take both the right and left podium. The first person to speak will be Deborah Schwartz. The second will be Roberta Levine. I think there are, are there people outside? Okay. Okay, thank you. So again, Deborah Schwartz and Roberta Levine. The next two will be Joseph, I'm going to say Finello, because I can't tell if that's an N. Finello and Belinda Flores. Yeah, we have lots of people outside. And you are, sir?
Joseph Finello.
There you go. Well, Joseph, since you're here and ready, why don't you go right ahead?
I'd like to comment what I just heard today with regard to a busload of the religious people coming up from Boca Raton, from the Century Village in Boca. My curiosity is, why are they here when it doesn't concern them? Number two, I would like to ask if there is a law of some sort, which I was listening to Mr. Stone, with regard to a commercial property and a religious establishment in the same building, considering that the building is owned by an LLC. My third comment would be, within one mile, less than one mile, there are, will be, if you approve it, three temples within one mile. The one on Haverhill Road is also a member of the Orthodox Union. I have been living in Century Village for approximately 10 years, and over the past seven or eight years, I saw no problem with the religious people walking over to the Orthodox Union on Haverhill Road. Why, all of a sudden, for roughly 148 people, do they want their own building, and they want their own services, whatever it is? I just, I just can't fathom it. So again, if it's approved, that's three temples within less than one mile, all within walking distance. So there is no problem with them. If this is disapproved by the board, it would be greatly appreciated to many of the 7,600 units in Century Village. There will be, like you had said, the fact that you have 100 and some odd comments... had said, the fact that you have 100 and some odd comments for it, because part of it is they brought a bus up from Boca Raton. And they have no-
Excuse me, excuse me. We are not going to have outbursts in these chambers. Please stop his time. We're not going to be having outbursts in these chambers. These are civil meetings, and they will follow what would be professional protocol. I appreciate your cooperation. Thank you. I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead.
No, that's all right. I appreciate that. But I can't see any reason why Boca Raton came up here when they have no interest per se in Century Village West Palm Beach. And that's where I will end it. I thank you for your time and your-
Could you identify yourself, please?
Roberta Levin, Somerset A, Century Village. I had some very carefully crafted remarks, but you have the cards, so I'm going to have to speak off the cuff. I am opposed to the county approving this religious group, using this building for religious reasons. I've been coming to Century Village for 54 years. My folks were original owners. They used the temple across the street on Haverhill. There was never a problem walking over there. If you allow this building to be put in the middle of Century Village, you are physically dividing this community, and it will be the end of Century Village. You may, you may have met the criteria for the zoning commission. You may have met the legal, you know, legally, but emotionally, you will be dividing Century Village. That corner is extremely busy. There will be traffic. People are very, very upset about this. We welcome these people into our community, but they are dividing it. It's very sad. That's it.
All right. I'm going to ask Deborah Schwartz or Belinda Flores again. Michael Deusch and David Langer. Langer?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Langer. I'm a snowbird and live at 39 Plymouth E, West Palm Beach, when I'm here in Florida. I'm here again to give support, to allow the rear of the first floor of the medical building to be used as synagogue on the Sabbath, when there is no traffic, because on the Sabbath, we don't drive. We aren't permitted to travel by vehicle to and from the synagogue. So to answer that, gentlemen, there will be no traffic. And also, let me add, there's not one person in this room from Boca Raton. You can look at everybody's identification card, including mine. Nobody is in this room from Boca Raton. The buses all came from Century Village here in West Palm Beach. Over a year ago, on the high holidays, on the eve of Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year of 2021, Barry Fishman, a Hasidic Jew, was run over and killed instantly crossing the Haverhill Road. That is why we need a synagogue close by. The gentleman that was sitting right here before, his name is Moses Fishman. His brother, Barry Fishman, was run over and hit by a car so hard that his body was thrown hundreds of feet while trying to cross Haverhill. By allowing this commercial property on the first floor at the rear of the building to be used as the synagogue will allow the congregants not to have to cross the Haverhill Street. Many of these people are handicapped. I'm not a Hasidic Jew, and you can see from my motive address, I'm here today only to give support to the Hasidic community, to get this amendment they are asking for. By allowing the synagogue to be used by the elderly will save many lives, and by not having senior citizens and many handicapped not cross this major intersection on our holy Sabbath. Please help us save many lives and not, heaven God forbid, lose another precious life like the life of Barry Fishman. Ladies and gentlemen, Barry Fishman's brother, Moses, is handicapped. He cannot walk to the Haverhill synagogue anymore. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Michael Deusch. I reside in Century Village, and I'm here to address the variance request and obviously the development order. According to type two variance, that fails to meet these standards shall be deemed adverse to the public interest and shall not be approved. The future land use for Century Village is R18 residential. Back in 2009, the county decided to approve uses of a commercial nature to serve the residents and guests of Century Village. I've always interpreted that to mean all the residents and all the guests. This proposal wants to modify that, the particular uses that were approved back then. They are, in addition to putting the synagogue in, they want to reduce the retail by 1,000 square feet, reduce the medical and dental by 3,600 square feet, eliminate the adult daycare center by 1,000 feet, and obviously add 1,600 square feet for a place of worship, which has 148 seats, of which would require 49 additional parking spaces. The synagogues that are located in proximity to Century Village, both north and east of it, never requested a reduction in parking. Also, they want to allow additional space for outdoor amenities, and the presentation they have today has not been reviewed by staff, but it appears that it would violate the setbacks. They also stated that, or the code requires that, "We do not confer upon the applicant a special privilege denied by the plan." Not the plan, but the county's restrictions, the code. It says you cannot have a place of worship within that commercial district. They also stated that things have to be commonly enjoyed by other parcels of land that are similar. I contacted several of the synagogues. There are no pools in any of the synagogues. This is an exception. Pools are in commercial uses, but none are in places of worship. Schools have them, gyms have them, clubs have them, et cetera. Apparently, if the pools were built to the setbacks from the east, excuse me, from the west and the, the north, and built within those setbacks legally, like every one of us do when we build things, we abide by the setbacks, that they would have to even lose more parking.
Mr. Deusch, can I ask you to wrap it up?
Several things were stated, that there is a need for expansion of religious services within the development. Basically, there are no religious services in the development. So how can you expand something that does not exist? Reference to the parking.
I need you to, I need you to conclude your remarks. You're, you're over your time limit, sir.
All right. I just have one thing to say. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I can count. I counted 79 spaces there one day. On Saturday, I counted approximately 25. The other concern is that-
Thank you very much. I'm going to have to ask you then your comments.
Hi there. Could you identify yourself?
Yes, my name is Belinda Flores from 106 Stratford H. And probably a few of you know me who I am, and I speak my mind. And first of all, I want to first bring something up which really was a, a big slap in the face of the veterans of Century Village from the last meeting at the zoning board, the public, the permitting, the zoning area, zoning building, that a man would actually say that, call us Hitlers, and then says that, oh, that you, we didn't kill enough. That is so wrong, first of all. We just had Veterans' Day. Who was the one that came to help all the people in Germany? The Americans. Others, other countries did. For them to say that there were many, many veterans in Century Village. We didn't come here to Century Village to divide Century Village. We all came to come to relax, to retire, not to make this a divided community. I have nothing against them, but it's what it is, is they want us to do what they want. They don't follow the rules. And let me tell you one thing, that is wrong. We all follow the rules. We come here to live. We come here to live among all of us. And you know, I am from a descendant, I'm a Sephardic Jew from Spain. My grandmother, she came to flee Spain and come over to Puerto Rico. And then mom also, I'm a Filipino, who came, who was, that the Filipinos came and greeted all the Jews that came on this big ship to flee, fleeing, trying to find a place. We, we celebrated that. We took them in. And who came? The Japanese came and came to, to the Philippines. Who came? MacArthur. The Americans came, and the other people that came from the other countries to save us from, from, from all this. Please remember the, the history. We'll never forget what they done to us as Jewish people. But then you must remember, never forget that we came to help you. So don't ever call any of us Hitlers, because we came to defeat Hitler. So please don't ever say that. That was a big slap in the fate of all the veterans that came out to help. Many lost family members. They came back with no limbs, or they came back not destroyed. Please, don't ever say that among them. And you know what? Why are you dividing a community?
Ma'am.
We never said anything about dividing a community.
Ma'am.
And my point is, how many members of the new Jewish community is going to be?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. May I have Rabbi Samuel Koenig and Harold Moskowitz?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Assistant Mayor, and commissioners. First of all, I'd like to clarify the record of the last speaker. I was the one who spoke at the last meeting. It's a matter of record on the video, as anyone can see. I never called anyone a Hitler. What I said was what I was called 14 years ago when I came to the commission meeting. That was all I said, and these people were present. I never called anyone, but I repeated what I was called. Let me correct a couple of misconceptions here this morning. One of the speakers before, and also last week, said there are four synagogues in Century Village. Let me, and she was the woman who brought the 700 protests, said it was a matter of record, as you all know. Today, we have videos. And let me say the following. The first one is Eitz Chaim, that's been around since its inception. It caters, and it's so big that we had last week, we provided three prefabricated homes to accommodate the new members of Century Village that are here. The second are two little apartments. How many people go into a living room that on Friday night, last week, I had one person that had both his toes amputated in my section in Plymouth, where I am on the board and been a citizen here for 14 years. Another one, I fixed his roof. He died, my age. He died the next day, heart attack. There are many people, I can't walk, I walk with a cane because of COVID. These people have aged, and many people come here are with, are with various illnesses. These aren't little daycare centers. These are senior citizens, children of the Holocaust. So I say to you, that's the second two. They're for Friday night, Saturday morning, just like the, the congregation that will have 150 members. Let me tell you, they're going to have to expand the synagogue even greater soon, because it only accommodates 150 members, and mostly it's on Saturday, because it's full. People are studying the Bible there all day. So I say the following. The last one is the conservative congregation, where these people will be disallowed from having any say. It will only be in season time. But now, let's go on to the pools. I cannot believe that my wife's coming back from New York and hears that she's not going to have her own pool. But there was a certain accommodation to do that. There's also, I will tell you, a wall, a wall, that's built in between the next section of residences that I've never seen, in between the trees. So there's already, there are walls. That's how far it is. So I say to you, give these people the option to play like everybody else, because the pools are restricted to members of those associations. Give them a place to pray on Saturdays when they walk over and the Walgreens is closed and only 25 people use it. And by God, tell, let Florida and you people tell him that these people, children of the Holocaust who are coming to Florida, are here to stay.
And you were Rabbi Koenig, right? Thank you, sir. Please identify yourself.
My name is Harold Moskowitz. I just want to add a couple points. One, just last Saturday, we had an individual who had trouble walking, walking with a cane, who literally collapsed because his going to the synagogue in the afternoon was too much for him for walking from, I think it was Gulf's Edge 11, which is approximately four tenths of a mile. So that's, you know, he's just one, and we had, ultimately, had to, a number of people had to get him up, put him in some kind of walker, so be able to drag him across the street. Secondly, if you ever sit there on a Saturday afternoon, or a Friday night, and waiting for the light to turn, one of our religious prohibitions is also to, to hit the crosswalk sign. So we're waiting for the lights to change. People, it's, it's very dangerous because people are very scared to walk, because if you, if you ever sit by Haverhill, there are people who are driving there 70 miles an hour, 65 mile an hour, at all the time, and people afraid to, to cross and to get hurt. So one of the reasons for those people who are disabled, that they won't have to walk all the way to, across Haverhill and to Eitz Chaim, and they'll behave, have a place that they don't have to put their lives in danger to cross the street.
Thank you.
Excuse me. It's a traffic engineer, excuse me. We make accommodations on the, on the walk buttons for religious needs.
That's correct.
You can turn on your-
That's correct. We always do that, and we have it on that intersection, yes.
They're, they're programmed for the Sabbath, also programmed for high holidays and such?
Correct. We get the schedules from the synagogue, and we adhere to them.
And you do this for a number of religious facilities around the county, not just over, adjacent to Century Village?
That's correct.
Thank you. Just want to make sure people understand, traffic is, does try and accommodate by not requiring the button to be pushed, so. Thank you.
Jacob Frankel and Marie Farina, please.
Good morning. I'm Marie Farina. And first of all, I really don't appreciate being attacked. And I know a lot of the comments would direct it toward me, because I did speak at the other meeting. And yes, there is a lot of the people represented here, but what about the rest of the Century Village people who have also come by bus that's in the other part of the building, because there was not enough seats? So it looks like everybody's in, wants this, and you don't see the people that are opposed. There are people opposed. I do have the petition with over 760 signatures. They don't want this to become a select group people running Century Village, and that is what is happening. You're establishing a private community within Century Village by allowing the synagogue to be placed there. There is a synagogue outside of Hastings that come January 1st is also going to be up- outside of Hastings that come January 1st is also going to be up and running by the Orthodox. There is a synagogue being held in Somerset. There is one that you approved for in Plymouth. So that's four. So now, we're going to have a fifth. I understand there are older people here. There are people here with, that can't walk. As far as that gentleman that was killed, I'm sorry it happened. But it was dark, and they wear the dark clothing. They won't wear anything reflective. They won't carry flashlights. He was hit crossing against the light. I'm sorry it happened. But they have to follow the rules. They want to have their own pools. I don't go to Somerset Pool anymore, because I was told it's their pool and to get out. So I stopped going there. I don't bother them. They say there aren't children. I'd love for you to be down, when they're all down, and they bring their grandchildren, their great grandchildren. For two, three months, they're running around Century Village. They run around with their little skateboards. They run people off sidewalks. So you establish this temple here, they're going to be coming more with their children. Why are they also asking for an addition to their, in their plans? They have an addition for another 3,000 square feet. What is that for? They won't tell us. I've heard. They want a deli. They want a restaurant. They want a library. They want to expand. So while they're just asking, saying, oh, we just want this little bit, and we're going to get it because of our religious belief, what about the rest of us and our religious beliefs? Can we put a Catholic church in the middle of Century Village? Can we put a Baptist church? There's others available, but they're asking because they want that one. And they bought it knowing that there was a problem. So they brought the situation upon themselves. And I don't think it's fair. And I did send the petition to all the Commissioners, and I hope that you took the time to read it.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Jacob Frankel, one of the board members of Chal Choseedom. I, I will repeat one thing from the last meeting. We had the meeting with Yoko before we bought the property, and we had the discussion, if we should buy this property or not. And they gave us a lot of encouragement, and they thought it's a very good idea to buy this property. And we are here, basically, taking a very small space in the back of the building, as our lawyer said before. And basically, it's just for Saturday, for elderly people who can't walk. And my father is here as well, and I walked with him this Saturday. He lives very close, in Salisbury Sea. It's only a walk of about 10 minutes. In the middle of the way, he stopped. He couldn't walk anymore. So I'm just asking you, all the Commissioners, please, to approve this. Thank you very much, and thanks for everybody for coming.
Thank you. Yvonne Steinberg and Saul Hirsch. And please turn off your phones. Okay. Yvonne Steinberg and Saul Hirsch, if you're outside, please make your way in. I have Morris Steinberg also, and one last call for Deborah Schwartz. Those are all the cards that I have left to speak. If any of you are here, please come up to the microphone. Please identify yourself, sir.
My name is Saul Hirsch. I live 138 Dover B. I've been here for about 12 years. I'm not going to concentrate and talk about the part of the synagogue. This thing was already discussed, and we all know the importance of it. I'm going to concentrate on the part of the, of the pool. The, the lady before said that she wants to make sure that the community stays together, and there's not going to be any emotional, there's not going to be any contention and any fights. I myself and my wife, since the last 10 years, went up to, to, to double PRF and other places to ask, please, so for the, for the sake of the peace of the community, to have our own little space, maybe one or two hours, where there's going to be this gender separation. And, and there were many, many excuses, which I understand, but it was not something that we were able to, to, basically, to successfully conclude. So a lot of, a lot of fights, and, and it broke out in, in the pool, like the lady mentioned before. And this is not a good situation. People stop coming and to the pool. People come here to relax. So I think for, for the sake of the community, and for the peace of the community, this is the best idea. It's a win-win situation. Nobody's going, is going to bother. Nobody's going to come in a pool where they, where they wear things differently. Yeah, people have their, their stereotypes. It's not, nothing is going to happen. It's, it's a win-win, and it's going to create and cause peace in the community, rather than the other way around. And I ask the Commissioners, who were nice enough to consider, to consider our request and our plans, to please approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Mr. and Mrs. Steinberg and Deborah Schwartz. Those are the three cards I have left. Sir, are you Mr. Steinberg? Please come to the podium.
Good morning or afternoon. My wife is going to yield to me, so she won't be speaking. Respectful Commissioners, members of the audience, my name is Morris Steinberg. I live in the village about two years now. It's one of the best places, and I believe in the country, for anybody, not only for the city community. I find it to be a very cohesive, respectful community. And my neighbors, I'm not too familiar with all the issues over here. I would like, only to ask you, I've been in, a community leader for the past 40 years. I've been involved in these issues in the past, in other areas in New York. I know there's been adjudicated by more than once, more than 10 times, in many other communities. And at the end of the day, they all were approved, whether it was on the state, federal level. I would like just to say a comment from my experience. I'm not sure if anybody understands that this legal issue can expand and turn into a big cost to everybody. And it's going to come out of the association of Century Village. And I have experience in other places, that the people who are for, were not forced to pay for these legal fees. The people who are opposed pay for their lawyers. People who are for, cannot be expected to pay from the association. So I'd like to have this consideration and comments, previous comments and all, everything else. I would like to thank you all for giving me the opportunity. Thank you very much.
That's it. That's it for comment cards.
All right. Does anybody else, is anybody else wanting to comment on this item that has not submitted a comment card, or has not been able to get into the chambers? Staff, do we, please check.
We have a woman over here.
Can you come up to the podium? But you're going to need to fill out a comment card. And you'll have three minutes. Please identify yourself.
Hello, everybody. My name is Judy Mezzi. I've been a resident of Century Village for 12 years. I am not Hasidic, but I definitely can understand where they're coming from. My, my particular thing is the two-pool situation. I think it would benefit everybody in Century Village if the Hasidic group had their own pool. They wouldn't encroach on the other members, the way they look, or they have, some people have an issue with that. I think two pools would give everybody the opportunity to go to swim when they want to swim. They could swim from 9:00 to 9:00. They're not limited to just certain times to swim. And it would very much be appreciated in behalf of everybody. And we're not looking here to take over the village. We're here as American citizens. We all pledge allegiance to the flag. We're here to give everybody the equal opportunity, which they want, no matter how they look, be it in their Hasidic garb, or be it in their bikinis. We're here to accommodate everybody. And I think as a, as a county, we should accommodate people. We don't, we are not people, we are respectful, we're responsible, we're not drug dealers, we're not drug pushers. We, we're, we're, we're citizens of the United States of America. And to give them the opportunity for them to practice religion is, I think, something that the Commissioners should approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized, and then we'll have, we have another speaker.
Just a couple of things. I want to make sure. I wasn't quite understanding. They're saying the pool would then free up other facilities within Century Village. So I don't really see why anyone would be opposed to them having two pools, one pool, so on and so's a few problems. But then also, I wanted to know, as far as traffic goes, and somebody had mentioned a comment, there's multiple parking spaces there, but are they held to the same standards, even though they're all walking there? Or is there a difference?
They are asking, they did, did they remove the parking variance?
They're doing an administrative deviation.
Yeah, they're, they're being held at the same standard for parking, whether or not, regardless of religion. We can't give them a credit for not driving.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just add in, because what's in front of us is a house of worship, not a particular religion, so could be utilized by any, any religion, potentially could buy. Once this is put in place, it would, any other religious type use would be allowed there. So, and some do drive.
I believe we have one more comment. Can you come up to the podium, please, and identify yourself, and fill out a, and if you haven't filled out a comment card, you'll, you'll need to do so.
I did already fill out a comment card. Thank you. My name is Jean Berman, and I live in Northampton N. in Century Village. I have no objection to having a prayer hall or synagogue, or whatever you want to call it, inside the building, if it's space that isn't already being used. It's not going to displace anything. I happen to be Jewish, though I'm not Hasidic, but I have no objection to that. However, I am not happy with the plan of either one or two swimming pools, for several reasons. One is that the original plan, at least, was that the swimming pools were going to take up 11 parking spaces. And that's 10% of the available parking. Now, as has been pointed out, there are a lot of people in Century Village who are either handicapped or mobility impaired. And they were talking about using the back part of the building in the back parking lot. Well, the back parking lot, as I understand it, is primarily used by the employees of the building. If you take away some of those parking spaces, those folks are going to be parking in the front part of the building, which is more accessible to people who are going to Walgreens, or going to the doctor's office. I happen to use the Walgreens, and my doctor's office is in that building. So I am very familiar with the building. Another point being that, it was brought up, that there is an irrigation pump that is used for irrigating the land along that road, and in some of the surrounding, you know, residential communities. And if these pools take up the space that they were talking about, that would need to be moved. And that's something that, if it had to be paid for by the residents of Century Village, it would incur an extra assessment on everyone in the village. And it's not clear if their plan for just having one pool would alleviate that problem. And nobody seems to have mentioned that. So the other thing is that anytime you have a swimming pool, a swimming pool is an amenity. It is not an accessory use of a religious facility. So I think that, you know, having a swimming pool in a parking lot is not really an appropriate place to put it. If they wanted to build swimming pools, there was the golf course property that had been available, and that hasn't been built on because of drainage issues. They could contact those people and put their swimming pools there. They could have as much room as they wanted, and no, no impact to the rest of Century Village. So that's the end of my comments. And I did bring a book with me that has prayers, and Hasidic prayer includes unity with diversity and peace in the community. So I would like to see peace in the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Let's see. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution.
Excuse me. I want to make sure that we give the applicant, if he wants to respond to any of the...
Not much I want to respond to. That irrigation pump she mentioned, we are making accommodation for that. We have designed our pool to work outside of that, so that it is on our site plan. We've resolved it. The one other comment in response to pool capacity, we did do a little research on that. The two-pool capacity has 45 people under the area of that. The single-pool capacity is 36. So it would be a minor reduction in that intensity. And having spoke to my client, he says, because they, because we had to move that north pool to meet that north setback, he says, and many of the members of the community actually prefer the one-pool plan, because it created a little nicer single amenity, instead of two smaller pools. So they said, you know, they think it does reduce the intensity, and it does actually create a better amenity for them. So they do actually prefer that single-pool plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Commissioner Sacks has a question for you, sir.
I think I called you Scott before Seth, right? Thank you. A couple of questions while you're up there. What consequences to the community of Century Village would this application have? That is, with regard to parking spaces, with regard to a pump for irrigation, with regard to noise, or anything else? Could you, as the, as the attorney on the case, I wanted to ask you, what, what consequences would, if, if we approved this, would it have on the, on the people of Century Village?
Absolutely. The first point that's important to make is this is for the residents and the community that live there today. So whether they're attending synagogue here, or across Haverhill, they live here. They are going to walk to worship, and they are going to recreate in the community, as is available to them. Nothing will change. The fact that they have to walk a shorter distance to here, to make them able to do so, will have virtually no impact. They're utilizing the sidewalks and the right-of-ways in the community. That is part and parcel of where they live, and that they pay for every day. The pools themselves, I don't know what a negative impact is from the use of a swimming pool. It's not going to be a raging party at this community. It is going to be a quiet and subtle affair of them enjoying a fully-screened pool, and being able to soak up the sun and swim and get some healthy outdoor exercise. I see no impacts to the surrounding community.
So there were a couple of allegations, or not allegations, but statements, that, that if this application is approved, that it would have a negative impact on the other people, such as not having enough parking spaces to go into the commercial building, or impacting their peace there around the private place where you want to have the synagogue? Do you have, what do you know? Of course you do.
Yeah.
Are there any negative impacts, such as even taking away one parking space from the members of the Century Village community?
So this is a private facility, and it's run as a commercial operation. The success of that Walgreens, and that salon, and that medical office are as critical to my client as it is to the availability of that to the surrounding community. We're not going to do anything that jeopardizes that. If you recall from the plan, we have a triangle parking spot to the south. As of today, there's virtually never a car in that parking lot. If it comes clear to our residents, to our owners, that people are having trouble parking at the Walgreens, they're going to say, hey, Walgreens staff, we want you to park in that triangle on the south side of Century Village. triangle on the south side of Century Village. Hey, doctor's offices, hey, we would like our employees, your employees to park down here. It's true, right now, they park in the back of the building, and if there's 10 cars back there utilizing the pool, and it creates a parking issue for the front, we're going to resolve that. We meet the zoning code, we have the space, and if we need to make sure our employees are parking in that triangle on the south side, this isn't a large area. Walking across the street for staff is not a big burden, it wouldn't be, it's right across the street. So, we will manage that, but as we pointed out, in every instance, we had 50 available parking spaces, even at the height of a in-season, you know, day of the week, we always, even at the height of that, we had 50 available spaces. So, again, from both a zoning standpoint and a practical standpoint, there's parkings there, and we will always have it available.
Very good, thank you for that answer. One last question, and I really don't know the answer to this, but are these pools ever used, like for a mikvah or something religious?
They are not. The pool, the facility across Haverhill is, in fact, a mikvah facility, from what I understand. These are recreation pools, period.
But if they were used for a mikvah, for religious use, then that would even be a greater argument to have a type of, and this is a Maria asking, to have, to have that pool available to them? I mean, could they, could it be used as a, as a mikvah?
I don't know what the ritual requirements are for the pool to qualify as that, so...
Okay, that's enough, thank you.
Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
Thank you, I have a, thank you, ma'am, I have a question for Seth. And I've been to a Sukkot party recently, that was pretty wild, by the way. Having said that, there's been some discussion here today about who should be entitled to use this private space or not, and what type of facilities and services should be provided to the residents by way of this private space. But as I understand it, it is privately owned, as we, as we recognize, and there is a future land use designation of HR 18, I believe. Is that correct? And so, at least from a county planning and entitlement standpoint, there could be upwards of 45 private, new private homes built on this property, and then no services provided to the community at large. Is that fair to say?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any other lights, so I'll go back to you, Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a development order amendment to reconfigure approval, to reconfigure the site plan, modify uses, and modify the conditions of approval, subject to the conditions of approval as indicated in Exhibit C2, as amended by, by the staff.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Kerner. Is there any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, our attorney would like to speak to us.
Sir, I just wanted to clarify, if that motion included the two-pool site plan layout, or the one-pool site plan layout?
They prefer the one pool.
I think that since they prefer the one pool, I just left it as, as they preferred.
The plan that's in the packet has the two pools, but we can administratively change it. The use in itself is an administrative approval, so if the, if the applicant chooses to submit the single pool administratively, we would review it at that time.
Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
Thank you, mayor. And in seconding Commissioner Bernard's motion, I'd like to say the following. It's important for all the residents to know that, as county commissioners, we have an oath, and we have a duty, and while I am of the Jewish faith, and I bring that experience to this chamber, when we sit here as county commissioners, make public policy decisions, we have to make them on what's in the best interest of the community at large, and also based upon, in this context, substantial competent evidence standard. And so, I'll second the motion by saying I find substantial competent evidence on eight points that have to be met, and I'm basing that decision, and I'm basing that finding specifically upon the evidence that's been presented today in this hearing, the comments from the public at large, and also the findings and publications of professional staff that have been provided to the Board of County Commissioners thus far. Also, in seconding this motion, I hope that everybody in this chamber feels welcome, regardless of your political, religious affiliation, or your preferences. We always aim to ensure that everybody has a voice in this county, and through their county commissioners, and we hope that you feel that spirit alive here today. Let me send my condolences additionally to Moses Fishman. I don't know who you are, but I know that you're in the chamber. My sincere feelings of loss for you, and I, and your brother Barry Fishman, who passed away, and I'm, and I know the members of the board join me in that sentiment. Also, in seconding this motion, I don't have to respond to comments like, we don't want a select group of people to run Century Village, because this is a decision about a development order amendment. I don't need to defend or respond to comments about use the temple across the street, or that this is the end of Century Village. I don't have to respond to questions like, why does it concern one Jewish population who lives in the south part of this county, and why they should come to the defense of the interests of another Jewish population in the central part of those, this county? I don't have to respond to questions about why do they want their own building, and why do they want their own place of worship. I'm confined to analyzing the application based upon the eight points that are legally required, and that we must do it in the least restrictive way under the federal constitution and federal statutes and case law. And so I say that in, in support of the second of the motion that Commissioner Bernard made, I appreciate deeply all the public discourse, and all the public comments, and your participation in local government. I also find it somewhat odd, from an evidentiary standpoint, that there was commentary today that this Jewish population uses pools, and it makes other people uncomfortable, and yet here they are trying to accommodate the preferences of their neighbors, who I'm sure they love deeply, by providing a pool for their use only, to take that pressure off the community at large. And so I appreciate the accommodations that you've made, that your clients have made, and that this community has made, to provide that outlet and that specific service to this population. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, we have a motion and a, and a second. Are there any other comments? All right, I think before I, before we call for the vote, I, I just want to say, as the commissioner who represents Century Village, and watching the community and the issues that have been going on in regards to this application, it's disappointing to see a community, one community being, coming apart, or not, not coming together. It's, as somebody who, you know, lives on the outside and, and watches this, it's, because I have many friends in Century Village for many, many years, and, you know, regardless of what happens at this vote today, and whether this moves forward or not, is, we all live in this community together. It's our responsibility, as human beings, as Americans, as Floridians, as people who live in this community, to get along with one another. We chose to be here, most of us, very few of us, Commissioner Kerner, you accepted, I guess Commissioner Baxter, right? We're not born here, and we chose to come here. So we have responsibility to each other to, to work out our differences. But at the end of the day, you know, and we saw it happen just a few weeks ago, you know, hurricane bearing down on us, who's going to come to each other's rescue? Who's going to come to our aid when a disaster happens? It's all of us. It's all of us coming together. And so, I just ask, that after this is done, that we learn to come back together, that we put this behind us, that we can agree to disagree, but we all agree, that we're all humans, that we all deserve respect, that we all need to come together in one community, and I ask that you reach out your hands to one another, and, and come back together. Because as somebody, as I said, watching this, it's, it's never a pleasant thing. But on the other hand, it is our responsibility to carry out the law, and I think our attorney has, has told us what, what the law is. So with that, I, I will be supporting this, this motion. I didn't agree with having the two pools, so I really appreciate the fact that you all were able to find an accommodation, to try and compromise with your neighbors, and come, bring in one pool. So with that, clerk, will you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Baxter? Here.
No.
Yes.
No.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Marino?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
Seven to...
That motion passes, eight, seven to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you. Please, stop, 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 stop. I ask you to please go on your, on your ways quietly, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll come back together, finish our zoning meeting, and then we'll take our lunch break. Thank you for your patience, everyone.[1293.20] We're just looking for Commissioner Sacks. In the vicinity, so we're going to go ahead and end our recess and come back to order. And we are, next up is item 3B2. This is the Thomas Packing Plant 2. Excuse me. All right. And do we have an applicant that would, ready to make a presentation?
Thank you.
Mr. Tuma.
Good afternoon, County Commission, Mr. Mayor. My name is Kent Tuma with Urban Design Studio.
Still morning.
Yes, good morning for another forty minutes or so. Kent Tuma with Urban Design Studio. My address is 610 Clemata Street, West Palm Beach, Florida, 33401. While we're waiting for the presentation to come up, just going to give you a little bit of background why we're here. Today for the Thomas Packing Plant, which is located at the northeast corner of Clintmore and 441, the proposal today that is in front of you is to modify an already approved MUPD, a commercial development, which was approved for 166,000 square feet of retail. It had 24,000 square feet of medical office. It had 150,000 square foot assisted living facility, converting that into a 70-unit residential parcel. You transmitted already a land use change from the existing land use to allow it to go to a residential land use of two dwelling units per acre. I have a presentation. It's about five or six slides. I'm going to merge together, if it's okay with Mr. Mayor, the zoning and the land use application all at the same time since its adoption. And thank you so much. So the first slide on the screen is location, which I identified in front of you a few minutes ago. It's approximately 37 acres, the former Thomas Packing Plant. The actions that are in front of you today are the adoption, if you so desire, the adoption of the land use to go to LR2. Also, we have, well, that's the adoption and the removal of the existing approval that's on the site. And then the zoning request in front of you is to allow to go from the multiple-use plan development into residential, single-family. So here's a site again, the existing site is a packing plant that Thomas family's owned for many years, particularly for our new commissioners. This has been front of the county commission many times over the years. Here's a view of that packing plant today. Mr. Thomas, as you know, has moved his packing facility. He's going further north to the Fort Pierce area. He's actually built a new facility. So here's the site and the request for the land use change. Identified in the purple is the multiple-use land use. The request or the adoption today is a change to residential or LR2. We do have support of the community to the north, which is the Oaks. We've worked very diligently with them. We have a letter of support for them to do the land use change. And then also, the next part of this, which is the second item in front of you this evening or this morning, is a change of the zoning from MUPD to residential, single-family home. This is the plan that was approved back in 20, I believe, 2016. If I recall correctly, you could see it was a pretty significant commercial parcel. The residential parcel will be eliminating several of the access points, including the access point to 441. And what's being proposed to you is this project, which Toll Brothers has under contract from the Thomas family. What's being proposed are 70 single-family homes. They're 76-foot wide lots by 140 feet deep, as you can see on the screen in front of you. You pull into the community, you enter into a gated community, there's a recreation pod. Then you go left and right to these large home sites that will be constructed in that So just a few things about the plan itself. It's a significant change from what's there today, right? So what was proposed, a commercial parcel, this is a huge reduction in traffic from what was originally proposed going into the residential development. We've eliminated several access points. We do have a letter of support from the Oaks of Boca Raton, which is the adjacent community to the north. We also have a letter of support from the West Boca Community College in April of 2022. They went ahead and approved it. Now, the big topic at the transmittal meeting, here's where we are in time. So today you transmitted this, the planning commission transmitted in June of 2022. In September, the board, the Board of County Commissioners transmitted this, and if I recall correctly, I think several of you were looking me in the eyes about workforce housing and how we were going to dispose of that workforce housing. If you recall, at that time, we had requested to do the off-site buyout. We are changing that today. So the development, and we're also, today, where we are today, we had the zoning commission went ahead and approved on November 3rd a unanimous recommendation for the zoning application. So to kind of get right to the matter in front of you, there are two conditions of approval, one in the land use and one in the zoning application that we request to be modified today. That will address your concern that you presented to me about the ability to have off-site workforce housing, excuse me, we're requesting to allow to have off-site workforce housing, but we will not be taking advantage of the in lieu of buyout fee. So we may be using the exchange program, we may be building units off-site. We're going to use everything but the in lieu of fee under the workforce housing. Identified on the screen in front of you is a change in the condition of approval that while I don't, your staff may not agree with it, they do agree with the form of the language as presented that was prepared by the planning staff. And then the second one was a planning condition, and that planning condition says, "and may utilize all disposition options with the exception of the in lieu of fee option." So to be clear, we more than likely will pick the community exchange program, but at this point in time, we are removing all the other options off the table. We will not, excuse me, we are removing the in lieu of fee off the table. And thank you for that short presentation. I know you've had a long morning. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Do we have any questions for Mr. Tuma? Seeing none, staff have a presentation.
Good morning, Kevin Fisher, Planning Director. I'll leave that to the board. We did give, staff gave a full presentation at transmittal. I think Mr. Tuma summarized it well. The main point of discussion at transmittal was with regard to staff had the onsite recommendation. The board removed the onsite, but was clear that in lieu was not the preferred option. So I would say that his proposed language to that amendment captures that conversation. So I'll leave it to the board if you want a full presentation or...
Anyone require a presentation? I don't.
No. I did have a question.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor, you have the floor.
I don't need a presentation, but I do like to have a report from traffic or engineering as to how the traffic with Clintmore and 441 is extremely busy. And I'd like to know how the, what the traffic situation looks like there today and how it's going to look after we put some 60 to 75 high-end houses there.
With the proposed plan?
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can now. Thank you.
Okay. So with the proposed plan, there will be a reduction in traffic? It's for, excuse me.
It's in the staff report for the planning item, page E27. It's almost 6,000 trips reduction.
Yeah, it's a reduction of almost 6,000 daily trips and 560 trips during the PMP hour.
6,000 less trips than the way it is today? No, the way that it was originally classified to be.
The way that it was approved with the prior future land use amendment with the CLF and the commercial uses.
Very good. And, okay, very good. Thank you. That's what I wanted.
All right. Since we're taking this both as the planning and zoning together, let's go ahead and let's get our disclosures. This is be item 3B3. And we will start with Commissioner Woodward.
Okay, for 3B3, Thomas Property Zoning, I had verbal with Scott Bachman and Kent Tuma.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 3B3, I've had verbal communications with Kent Tuma, Scott Bachman, Sheriff Scarborough, Fred Fister, Neil Sheeler, and Steve Thomas.
Thank you. Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you. I've had verbal communication with Scott Bachman, Kent Tuma, Fred Fister, and Lindsey Parsons.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. I, on item number 3B3, I've had verbal communications, meetings with Kent Tuma, Fred Fister, Scott Bachman, Tyler Woolsey, Adam Rule, and receive and file, please, correspondence and emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner.
Thank you, Mayor. On item number 3V3, Thomas Packing Plant, I met with or spoke with Scott Bachman, Fred Fister, Kent Tuma.
And Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, my staff and I met with Kent Tuma, Mark Levy, and I also spoke with Suzanne Mulvahill.
Okay. And my disclosure is I had verbal communication with Scott Bachman, Kent Tuma, and Fred Fister. All right. With that, let's see, would you like to, do you have another comment, sir?
No, no, sir. It appears there's going to be a motion. I'd like to maybe put our proposal back on the screen so you could see it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, do we have cards on this item?
We have two comment cards.
Okay. Well, get the comments then.
I have Drew Martin and Jim Knight.
Drew Martin, I'm here on behalf of the Luxet Group and the Sierra Club. And, you know, we came here to put this Thomas Packing Plant, and we all came together because it supported the ag reserve and the agricultural function. And so now, you see, this is the problem with all this, is we start out with something that supports the agriculture reserve and its purpose, and then it gets repurposed and rezoned to be something else, and now it's rezoned again to be something else. And this is what is going on with the ag reserve and the reason we're losing the function of the ag reserve. So we're very concerned. Are you going to set the timer? That's okay. It's been a long day, and I didn't want to go on, you know.
For you, you get another minute. All right.
That's great. So to the new commissioners, welcome. The Sierra Club is very active in trying to preserve what the ag reserve was intended to be. And what the ag reserve is, it was intended to be an agricultural area with some housing. But the concern is that we're losing areas, and this packing plant was there to support agriculture. And now it's going to have a different, it's going to have a different purpose. And we're seeing a lot more intensity in the ag reserve. Now, they said this is going to reduce the number of trips, but the reality is, this is not going to reduce the number of trips, this will increase the number of trips. So what we're trying to do, and we will be up here on a number of these items, is to just remind you what is the purpose of this ag reserve. The purpose was agriculture primarily with some housing and to support the people who were there and to support agriculture. So just keep that in mind as you vote on these items, that the focus is to have an agriculture area, and everything that you do there should support that purpose. And if it's not agriculture, it should be open space, water retention areas, and, you know, natural areas and wetlands. Thank you.
Jim Knight, Mayor, Commissioner, 740 Havana Drive, Boca Raton, Florida. Just wanted to say I support this project. It is a reduction in trips and not just car trips, but semi tractor-trailer trips. If you were to go over to the packing plant and see out there any given day when they're moving producers, 100-plus semis coming and going, it's not a very easy intersection to do that from. The Thomas family's been farming here for three generations. They're going to continue to farm here in Palm Beach County, and they're just moving their facility a little bit up the road. Thank you for your consideration.
Anything else? That's it. Okay. Bring it back to the board. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
I'm going to support this project, but I want to say something publicly about the Thomas family, because they were my neighbors, have been my neighbors for over 30 years. Thomas family started farming in the ag reserve three generations ago. The packing plant was there, and Mr. Knight, they haven't had semis there for a while. They had over 300 acres, you know this Dagmar, 300 acres of tomato cucumber fields, which were right behind my house. And raising five kids at this place was really fun, because they'd go back and, don't tell the Thomases this, but they'd pick the cucumbers and bring them in for salads, you know. Those days unfortunately are gone. Those acreage behind my house, which was part of Apollonia Farms and farmed by the Thomas family, is now Lotus and Bridges, Seven Bridges. They're all housing now, and I wonder if those folks who live on that most fertile ground realize what was underneath their, you know, their house and their driveway and all that asphalt. It was some of the richest soil we had in Palm Beach County and certainly in the ag reserve. Horses would run back there and lots of tortoises. It was really beautiful. But it's gone. It's gone. It's been gone for a couple of years. So the packing plant is empty and just lays vacant. It's sort of a sad and lonely place to see, but hopefully now with this new application, we'll have some families moving in, and hopefully they will know the soil upon which they build their families is a very rich part of the legacy of the Thomases and of the agricultural reserve. So I will certainly support this. Thank you.
Commissioner Kerner.
Thank you, Mayor. And beautiful comments, Commissioner Sacks or Vice Mayor Sacks, and incorporate them into a motion on 3B2 with the condition to cap the site at 75 units and require 10% of the units be required as workforce housing, as part of the workforce housing program, and that they are subject to the applicable requirements of the workforce housing program in Article 5G1 of the ULDC, and may utilize all disposition options with the exception of the in lieu fee option.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, and we have a second by Commissioner Sacks. And I've been also advised, Commissioner Sacks, that your admission to stealing the cucumbers is, statute of limitations has run out, so you are safe.
Thank you so much.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on this item? I don't see any lights lit. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries unanimously, and we have another item, companion item to this. We had the zoning, and then we have a...
We do, have we, is there any further public comment on the zoning portion? And we've done disclosures, so I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving official zoning map amendment as published. Does that capture the spirit?
I'm thinking you want it as amended, that bottom condition, planning 2, has the same language as may utilize, with the exception of the in lieu fee.
All right. That'll be my motion then.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by Commissioner Sacks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? That motion also carries unanimously. Okay. Thank you very much.
We'll need the abandonment motion too.
Sorry?
The abandonment motion.
Oh, we need to abandon?
Yes.
Thank you.
To adopt a resolution approving an abandonment of a type 1 restaurant for type 2 restaurants and a congregate living facility type 3 by resolution R. 2016-1084 through R. 2016-1089.
So moved, Mayor, on a gen item 3B3.
We have a motion and a second, a motion by Commissioner Kerner, a second by Commissioner Sacks, all in favor? All opposed? That motion also carries unanimously. All right. Are we finished with this item?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on.
Thank you, Board. The Thomas family is here. Commissioner Sacks, I clearly heard you and really appreciated your comments. Thank you again. You guys have a wonderful day. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item, what is this, 3B4 now?
Excuse me, through the mayor.
Excuse me, through the mayor. So 3B4...
What's part of that one?
3B5 and 3B6 are kind of a package, just like the other two items.
Okay.
And staff will refer to the applicant to do a combo presentation to start.
Very good.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Jeff Brophy with WGI. I just needed the clicker. I know we're up against lunch, and you have seen this in the past, so I'll be as brief as I can. I can promise no pools in the presentation, so I'll get through this as quick as I can. The subject site is just located to the southeast corner of Atlantic and Lyons. It's the 10-acre site shown in yellow here. Before you, you have the zoning request to go to the MUPD zoning. We also have a land use change to go to the CLR, as well as a change to the Sussman AGR PUD for change of preserve area. We, and again, we have the concurrent large-scale of future land use amendment to, to the additional properties just to the west of us in order to utilize these unused square footage in those applications. I'll go through this very briefly here. So again, you can see the two MUPDs just to our west there on the hard corner. We are the 10-acre site just to the east of that, sandwiched in between the existing Plaza Delray and Delray Lakes Estates. And what our plan is, is to modify, to swap this out from these two preserve areas that are currently with the Sussman PUD to additional acreage in the ag reserve. Again, this is just some of the historical areas. This was a part of the, the old crop dusting airstrip out in the ag reserve a number of years ago. What we are presenting today is to modify this to go to the CLR land use to include a car wash, retail, and self-storage. We do have FDOT approval for our access, which has been one of the major points that we wanted to make in regards to the importance of this project, because as of right now, the two existing centers, which you can see outlined in red, currently have to utilize the U-turn movement at the intersection in order to gain entrance to it. What this will allow is the free flow of traffic from the existing left-in across the property into now all three centers. Again, this is the site plan. We have worked the last 60 days with the neighbors at Delray Lakes Estates in regards to some of the more zoning-related issues, which included some buffer requirements that they wanted to see. We do meet the requirements for the rezoning, the DOA, and the conditional uses. And we do have a support letter from Delray Lakes Estates, or we do have support from Delray Lakes Estates. We have a support letter from the Alliance of Delray. There is one conditional, one condition of approval that we wanted to include that was, did not make the ad delete, and that was in regards to our eastern buffer. So we have a 20-foot buffer along our eastern perimeter, and I will just read this into the record. "The incompatibility buffer along the eastern property line shall be upgraded to include a three-foot berm. The buffer shall include an eight-foot wall along the top of the berm for the approximate north 300 feet of the buffer, as well as those areas along the length of the buffer where no building is proposed. In those areas where buildings are proposed, the eight-foot wall will connect to the north and south corners of those proposed buildings." With that, be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Traffic light? Is there a need for one?
No, there's, there's no need for one. No, and, no, so this, there wouldn't be one granted here at that, at that location, anyway.
Thank you.
Right. Anything else? We have two comment cards. Before we get to the comment cards, let's, we need to do, because we've also got a zoning application with this as well, let's, let's do our disclosures on this item as well. So we'll start with Commissioner Baxter. This item 3B4.
No disclosures at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to be clear, are we disclosing on 3B4 and 3B6? I think they're both zoning, and then 3B5 is a land use. All right. So I do understand where I'm at. Very good. On 3B4 and 3B6, I met with Jeff Brophy and received correspondence on the Atlantic Commercial and Self-Storage 3B6. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks, or Vice Mayor Sacks?
Thank you, Mayor. On item number 3B4 and 3B6, verbal communications and meetings with Jeff Brophy, Scott Backman, Doug Fearing, Ross Fearing, Jason Scher, and review and file emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you. On agenda item 3B4, I had verbal communications, actually met with Scott Backman and Jeff Brophy. And on item 3B6, I met with Scott Backman, Jeff Brophy, and Jason Scher.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 3B4, I've met with Jeff Brophy, Jason Scher, Cynthia DePonte, Scott Backman, and 3B6, Jeff Brophy, Jason Scher, Cynthia DePonte, and Scott Backman.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward?
Thank you, Mayor. For 3B4 and 3B6, I had a meeting with Scott Backman, and I've received email correspondence.
Thank you. On item 3B4, I had verbal communication with Scott Backman, Jeff Brophy, and Jason Scher. On item 3B6, I had verbal communication with Scott Backman, Jeff Brophy, Jason Scher, and also email correspondence. With that, we will move on to public comment. That's all right.
Okay, we have three comment cards. Drew Martin, Linda Smith, and Gail Ladd.
Drew Martin, I'm here on behalf of the Luxet Group Sierra Club, the Conservation Chair. Again, we're, we're really focused on trying to preserve what the purpose of the ag reserve was. And I realize that, you know, there have been changes. But the voters spent $100 million to set aside land in this area for agriculture, and part of that was to maintain the existing zoning so that it would be conducive to that purpose. Now, this development will go on ag land. Now, there's some debate whether they need, we need self-storage in the ag reserve. It's my belief that there is a lot of self-storage that people can get to fairly easily. Our concern is to continue chipping away of the agricultural lands. And if you look at the pictures of where these items are going, you will see it's on agriculture land. Now, as Commissioner Sacks said, the reason that Thomas Packing wasn't going to have a packing plant there anymore is because they have, no longer have farms. Why do they no longer have farms there? Because previous commissions voted to allow people to develop on farmland. So keep in mind, when you vote to take a piece of agriculture land and turn it into something else, you're reducing the value of the $100 million that the taxpayers put into this bond issue. Because in order for that land to remain viable, there has to be other agriculture land. And how is the other agriculture land maintained? That's maintained through zoning. And that zoning is, was intended that there would be a significant amount of agriculture. There would be some housing. But you will see, now that you're new commissioners and those who have been on the board, you will see that every time you have a meeting of this sort, there will be someone coming along with a new project and a new proposal. And this will, again, be chipping away at the purpose of the ag reserve, which was to have agriculture land. Now, originally, it was 80/20. It's now 60/40. You will also notice that many of these proposals are trying to get rid of the preserve requirement. The preserve requirement is what maintains the agriculture. So what we're trying to say is, we think agriculture's an important part of what Palm Beach County does. It's an important part of the economy. So please don't undermine the ag reserve over and over again. There are some projects that may be viable, but let's not approve everything. Thank you.
Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. I want to say welcome to Sarah Baxter and Marcy Woodward. I look forward to working with you on environmental issues in the future. A little unclear whether I'm combining my three comment cards together, but let's give it a try. On Sussman, I had made comments in my notes about why should we be allowing to delete or even reuse the land use designation as a preserve. And I apologize in advance if I'm a little confused on how these three things listed in the agenda are intertwined. If I understand, this will open the door to large-scale future land use amendments. While I may applaud the fact that there will be no net loss of preserves, and maybe I didn't even understand that part, why do you and the public need to waste our time and money again to fight, fight against a development to preserve Palm Beach County's zoning regulations? Please, no more large-scale land use amendments, especially in the ag reserve. As far as the Atlantic Commercial, which evidently is part of this altogether, this project needs three different revisions. Not one, not two, but three. So, do we really need a car wash in the agricultural reserve? Is this really necessary? What does that have to do with agriculture? The general public, and I can speak for myself, I know you guys know I'm here a lot, is exhausted trying to convince the Palm Beach County Commissioners to defend its zoning codes and preserve the agricultural reserve. Spare our disappearing farmland. If there are no more farms, there really is no more future. And what benefit to agricultural activity are car washes and self-storage? There's none. It doesn't enhance open space for surrounding properties and residents. It doesn't enhance environmental and water resources in any way. So again, I'm kind of combining these comments for these three issues. Just deny. We've kind of had enough. And I'll give you 47 seconds back of your day. Thank you.
Hello, and welcome to our new commissioners. I'm Gail Ladd from Jupiter, Florida, and I've been here before as a member of the Sierra Club. And I really want you, as Drew has said and Linda has said, we want you to think about what's happening. We have been opening the floodgates to portions and portions of the ag reserve being used for other things. And even though there's a preserve swap, and it may be a little bit bigger than what is there now, adding commercial low as a future land use does set a precedent. I'm asking also, is a car wash really needed? What is currently, on what is currently a preserve? A swap, yes, but again, setting a precedent. What about the use of the current preserve area? What, what is there now that you're switching for something else? Animals' homes, agriculture? I guess everyone has to establish their priorities. Mine is to ask you to deny. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Bring this back to the board.
I have a question.
We have a question. Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. And in all likelihood, maybe I'm confused, but I thought the part of the deal of the ag reserve was that if, if you develop on parcels that are able to be developed upon, that don't have conservation easements on them, that you have to put some of that into preserve, usually 60%. Is that fair?
So with, I guess I'll touch on two aspects. So with residential, the most common we see is the 60/40, where 60% of the land area is put in preservation, 40% is developed. With non-residential uses, such as commercial, the preserve requirement kicks in at 16 acres.
Okay.
What, Lisa mentioned, or it was mentioned that these three items are all kind of intertwined. It's because the site where the future land use amendment is proposed currently serves as a preserve area for other development. So by developing on this site, they had to then acquire other lands to have that preserve moved to another, preserve swap.
Doesn't that preserve swap, as long as it stays contained within the ag reserve, happen all the time?
Yes. There have been many other swaps of lands. Yes. It is a permissible...
Isn't that one of the design public policy points of our, of the governing ordinances at this point, is that the, I know that there's a larger GL issue going on that could move it outside, but as it stands today, are we violative of our own policies at this point, based upon what they're saying is that we're, we're opening the floodgates and we're breaking precedent? I'm not clear on where that, that's occurring.
Right. There's no net loss in preserve, and it's, it's being maintained within the agricultural reserve tier. That is a permissible action. It's happened in the past. At one point, I did just want to make sure that it was clear on the record. The 1999 bond purchase for, it was $150 million that the voters approved, 100 million of that went to lands for purchase in the ag reserve, roughly 2,500 acres. This is not touching any of those properties. And then the other $50 million of the bond were properties more north county, but other areas of the county. But I just wanted to be clear that this isn't affecting any bond purchases.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Those are all my questions, Mayor.
Commissioner Woodward?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had a question for my own clarification. The, the swap that is happening, you want to develop the parcel that was a crop dusting, and it's now a brownfield designation?
Correct. Yes. So one, yeah, the, one thing to clarify is that the 10 acres originally approved with the Sussman PUD approval, which is the, the current preserve area, is, is under DEP action, because it was, it was housed all the pesticides and herbicides used in the crop dusting. And so what we would be doing is, is taking the preserve from that 10 acres and putting it on an additional 10 acres elsewhere that has bona fide ag uses on them currently.
Commissioner Sacks?
Could you tell us where that's going to be?
Yeah, they're, they're just to the south of this. It's, it's two five-acre pieces just to the south of Atlantic, one on the east, one on the west side of Lyons Road.
Just to the south of Atlantic and Lyons?
Correct.
So that would be north of Clintmore?
It, it's north of Linton. So it's in between the...
I see. Okay, north, okay.
Yes. Yeah, it's in between Atlantic and Linton.
And the site that you're looking at, the Atlantic and Lyons, isn't that part of the quote ag reserve that is, that is open for commercial development in that area?
So there, there are certain requirements that you have to have in order to develop commercial within the ag reserve, and we, we meet that location criteria, I believe, is what you're referring to. Yes.
This darn car wash. I mean, do we, where is the closest, I never, where is the closest car wash to that location, by the way?
I think there, there's a location to the east. I, I don't know exactly the miles difference between the two, but it's something that, actually, we have talked quite a bit with the Alliance of Delray in wanting a car wash use out in the ag reserve. There was one originally approved over on Atlantic and 441, but that was not...
Wawa?
That was the Wawa, but the, it was not constructed in that location. And so it has been, it has been requested here. We worked with the folks over at Delray Lakes Estates in regards to what those impacts would look like, and have, have worked out the issues with them in regards to some of the concerns that they had.
Very good. Thank you.
And I'll just add in, just to help, and I think really educate my colleagues and the public as well, in regards to the commercial and in the ag reserve. So there's a commercial cap in the ag reserve, is there not?
There, there is a commercial cap, and staff can answer this, too, if they want to, yeah.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. There's a commercial cap of 1,015,000 square feet within the agricultural reserve.
So, and this does not violate that commercial cap, does it?
So as part of this amendment, the neighboring two commercial sites immediately to the west, they were built at square footage that was less than would have been permitted. So part of this amendment was modifying the conditions of approval, lowering the maximum square footage potential for those two, which then availed this site to then meet the commercial cap.
Without exceeding...
Without exceeding it, correct. So, right.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. On 3B4 Sussman AGR PUD, I'll make a consolidated motion to adopt a resolution approving official zoning map as published, a motion to adopt resolution for development order amendment as published, and a motion to approve a partial release of preserved conservation easement as published. as published.
Okay, so that, is everybody clear on the motion? Okay, do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Marino. Is there any further discussion on this item? Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, Richard Carlson for the record. I put a card in on 3B5. I represent Delray Lakes Estates Homeowners Association.
We are 3B5, 4, 5, and 6.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Yes, you did. There's actually, on 3B5, we have Chip Carlson, Drew Martin, Gail Ladd, Linda Smith, and Jim Knight.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the applicant for working with Delray Lakes Estates on resolving their issues on this. Jeff read into the record an additional condition on the 3B5 item. If that's going to be included in the motion, that's all I need to check. Thank you.
All right. To the motion maker, you including that amendment that was made earlier in the presentation?
Remind me the 3B5 issue?
I believe his motion was on 3B4.
3B4 only, yeah.
And the added condition would actually be on 3B6, not...
Oh, so we're only on 3B4, right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I thought you were doing consolidated. Okay, my bad.
Yeah, the three motions within 3B4 is published.
Oh, got it, got it. All right. All right, so on 3B4, we have heard everything, and all, let me just call the question, all in favor, all opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's go on to 3B5. Somebody like to make a motion?
Well, we have public comment on it, I think.
Yes, we do. Okay, so Mr. Carlson, Carlson, thank you. Again, Drew Martin, Gail Ladd, Linda Smith, and Jim Knight. And Jim's, I do not wish to speak, but you support. Thank you.
Drew Martin, again, on behalf of the Luxet Group, the Sierra Club, and I think that what we're trying to do is educate particularly the new commissioners on this, what's going on here in the ag reserve. And, you know, a lot of people like to state, well, the $100 million bond issue of which went to the ag reserve, well, they purchased the land, so that's over and done with. But that's not really the case, because the whole purpose when we did this was we went through a whole planning process, and the reason that was sustainable was because of the zoning, which preserved other parts. So it is important what you do and what decisions you make. Now, you know, we just think that things that go in there should be things you really need. And so the question is whether people want a car wash. Well, you know, I don't think that that's a life or death situation, you know? And if somebody has to drive a little ways to get their car washed, well, you know, if that was going to be a problem for you, then you shouldn't have moved into the ag reserve. Because when you move there, you knew you had limited services. So, you know, I, one commissioner says one time, well, I want to go get a taco. Well, you know, the ag reserve is not the middle of Kansas, and you can drive outside the ag reserve to meet your needs, whether it's self-storage, whether it happens to be a car wash. So what we are trying to say to you is, you know, when you do these approvals, what really needs, what's really an important need, and what's really just something somebody would like to have? And that has to be part of the decision, because everything you do in the ag reserve, because there's limited amount of space. And the people who are out there now, whether they have a horse farm or a farm, they make a decision whether they're going to stay in business based on what's going around, near them. So if you allow someone to build on a farm, in the case of what Commissioner Sacks said, when they build on Thomas Farms and they remove the farms, then what happened? Well, they later said, well, you know, we don't have a need for the packing. That affected the use of that area. What we're saying is the economy of Palm Beach County is dependent on this area to produce food. And so if you allow the continued development, piece by piece, it will ultimately impact the ability of this area to be successful. And as Commissioner Sacks said, this is very viable farmland. So that is the point that we're going to try to be making today with our public comments.
Linda Smith, still live in Jupiter, Florida. I made a lot of my comments on the last thing, last item number, but as many of you know, we've been coming here for years, speaking on one or two projects at a time. Today, I'm supposed to speak on eight. Something's happened. Something has changed. And it's historic in that it's been chipping away and chipping away. Maybe the developers are getting worried about, you know, the Sierra Club coming up here and talk. I don't think so. I think they're just trying to make money, and that's their job, I guess. But something has fundamentally changed in the ag reserve, and it will not exist too much longer. And that is something that's very frightening. A 10-acre preserve is obviously better than two 5-acre preserves. You start breaking these preserves into itty-bitty parts, and some of this combining of places to, you know, get to 16 acres, I mean, it's like a shell game. So we'll keep coming, and we'll keep asking, and I hope that someday we get some results. Thank you.
Gail Ladd from Jupiter. You are asking, some of you are asking questions about what is happening now, and I know you're kind of tied by what has happened in the past, and we understand that. We just don't want it to keep happening now and in the future. And I just want you to think about it. And maybe animals aren't important, maybe farmland isn't important enough, but we really think it is, and we'll keep coming. Every time we come, it seems like we get voted down. So we're getting discouraged, but we won't keep coming. Thank you.
All right. Okay, with that, Commissioner Kerner, you recognize?
Thank you. And I do appreciate the comments and perspectives and advocacy of everyone that comes to speak about these issues, including Sierra Club. And I appreciate also the concern about the degradation of the ag reserve and its original concept. And I think that, without getting too deep into the weeds on this issue, that there are proposals that aren't being heard today, but in sometime in the near future, that do attack the core principles of the ag reserve. But we also have to recognize that there's a structure in the agricultural reserve that says, you know, we're going to spend money on this, we purchase a land, if we're going to move forward and develop land, there's a quid pro quo, which is legal, and that's that you put acreage into preserve. And that's the concept, that's the beauty of it. And at the same time, we have to be cognizant of, once there is a land use in place, it's really, as a, from a zoning perspective, it's a market, it's a capitalistic market forces decision, what needs to be in the ag reserve to serve those residents. The ag reserve was contemplated to have residential, it was contemplated to have commercial. And who are we to decide whether a car wash is going to fail or not? I don't know. But I can tell you, those that own the land and are going to build on it, they probably know that there's a need for it. And so I try to not micromanage what the services are and let the market figure that out. So having said all that, I will make a motion to adopt the three ordinances for the Atlantic Commercial and Self-Storage, Fearing 2 and Seneca 2 amendments. And also note that it was transmitted in a 7 to 0 vote.
Okay, Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you. And before we call the question on that, thank you, Commissioner Kerner, for standing up for the principles of the ag reserve. Let me, let's remind everybody that when the master plan was initiated years before I was sitting here, certainly not years before I was born, but years before I was sitting here, that there were two corridors that were open for development. One was the area that we're looking at today, which is Atlantic, Atlantic Avenue, Lyons Road, Atlantic 441. That's where the original master plan said we need to have commercial development. That's what we're doing today. Now, there's a caveat, because this commercial development that is allowed in those two corridors provide for a commercial development that will, and you could probably say it better than I could, the folks from the, from the good group that always comes to support the ag reserve, to serve the needs of the residents, to serve the needs of the residents. A car wash actually serves the needs of the residents in two areas. One, we don't have a car wash that sits close for the needs of the ag reserve, for the people of the ag reserve. Secondly, I researched this a little bit, and I found out that without a close car wash, commercial car wash, what do people do? Well, they do what I always did as a kid. I had to wash mom and dad's car in the driveway. And what does that do? That water and soap and other chemicals that we use go into the drain field, into the soil. A car wash, and I know that the developers here, the applicants are going to confirm this, I know they are, that water is going to be recycled. So the water from a commercial car wash will be recycled and therefore cleaner in terms of being used as a chemical-laden water car wash in the ag reserve. So for that reason, I'm going to vote on this, I'm going to vote yes on it. And I've spoken to the applicant, and I know that Dr. Vinnaker has also been very helpful in researching this as well, because she also lives there. So we want to make sure that the soil of the ag reserve, which is so precious, is maintained in a clean way, and that will happen with a commercial car wash. And now that I have kids, they're washing my car, so I'll send them over to your place once it's built. And in this way, but those two corridors are the ones that will, where are really designated as commercial corridors for the ag reserve. So thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Is that a second?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
And watch your cucumbers if she sends her kids over.
No.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I don't see any other lights lit. All in favor, all opposed? That motion also carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to the last item before we take our break, and it's 3B6. And we don't need a presentation. Is there any discussion? We have comment cards on 3B6.
We have two speaking cards and one non-speaking card, Drew Martin and Linda Smith. And Jim Knight does not wish to speak, but he's in support.
I guess this is going to be a somewhat confusing day, because they seem to be the same thing over and over again. So...
Well, you could also decline if you wish.
Well, since I took the time to come down here, I always like to have a little...
Happy to have your comments.
Little something to say. But I don't want to get into a deep debate about car washes, simply to say that people can use different types of soaps that are not damaging to the environment. So hopefully, your kids, when they wash your car, use something that is, you know, biodegradable. So I would encourage that. I'm not, I would be curious to know, since you brought that up, how this car wash is going to recycle, if they are going to, are they going to capture all that? That would be interesting to know, since you brought that up. So I will limit my comments to that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida, still, and I'm just still asking you to deny for the same reasons. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right. Commissioner Kerner, you recognize?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. On Agenda Item 3B6, there was an additional condition that was mentioned by the applicant.
Yes, the applicant had read into the record a modified condition. It's actually a modified condition for Exhibit C4 and the Type 2 waiver, Site Design Condition 1, that we have on Page 13 of the staff report, would go away and be replaced with the one that they read into the record regarding the three-foot berm and the eight-foot wall and how it's connected.
And as to which motion would that apply?
That would apply to the last one, so the Type 2 waiver as amended.
Got it. All right. Mayor, I'll make a consolidated motion as to adopting a resolution approving the official zoning map as published, motion to adopt a resolution approving Class A conditional use to allow multi-access and limited access as published, a motion to adopt a resolution approving a Class A conditional use as a car wash as published, and a motion to adopt a resolution approving a Type 2 waiver as amended?
Yes.
As amended and as published.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Marino. So motion by Commissioner Kerner, second by Commissioner Marino. Is there any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed? That motion also passes unanimously, or motions pass unanimously. We will be taking a 30-minute recess for lunch to the commissioners. You will, if you head up to the conference room on the seventh floor, you will have food waiting for you up there. And this is how we run the meetings.
Wow, I like that.
And then we'll be back, and we'll start our planning portion of the day, our second part of the planning portion of the day.
Greg, 30 minutes.
30 minutes, yeah. We'll be back at 10 after 1:00.
So that's going to be up in the seventh floor?
Seventh floor conference room.
Thank you.
Yeah, I knew we were going to be, we were going to be...
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.